Welcome everyone to the April 21st meeting of the Planning Commission. We'll start with roll call.
Vice Chair Pezner, or Chair, or Chair Pezner.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Dennison.
Here.
Commissioners, Dallas.
Here.
Hut.
Here.
And Spears.
President.
Very good, all right. The approval of the agenda.
Move we approve is presented?
Second.
And seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great, all right. And then we're going to go back to the approval of the minutes of both March 17th and April 7th. Which one would you like to hear first? So let's go with March. Start with the earliest one, I guess. Whoever was here, can't remember. I don't think I had anything.
I didn't have any comments.
Okay.
No comments.
Peggy?
Bye.
All right, I guess we'll approve that one first.
Move we approve is presented?
Second.
And seconded, and those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, passage unanimously. And the April 7th minutes.
I have one correction.
Go ahead.
On line 80, Commissioner Spears agreed with Commissioner Spex's concerns, stated and felt that the commission is being asked to vote on something without knowing all the moving parts. It just says, "and not the moving parts."
Oh, okay.
I move we approve with those edits.
Any other way, any?
Sorry, are there any other edits?
Yeah, okay, okay, go ahead.
I move we approve with those edits.
Second.
Okay, very, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And passage unanimously, great. Council Liaison Report. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Pezner. Just a couple of things, just wanted to let you know, might otherwise have heard or seen, but the council did approve the number of the ordinance changes that we've been discussing, you know, you've been discussing in these meetings, and just wanted to let you know that we did pass ordinance number 1448, that amended the general plan and land use, the general plan, land use map and zoning map, 1449, that amended chapter 17 dot 29, and ordinance 1451, amending chapter 17 dot 34, and amendment, ordinance number 1452, which added the small home lot development to Title 17. So we had a lot of fun with two readings of those ordinances and on top of the discussion here, so I feel very well, well informed about those. So, and I also just wanted to thank you for the effort and energy that you brought to the first public hearing on the 7th, and I thought that, I did watch that meeting and thought that it was a really informative and really well-run meeting, so thank you for that.
Great, thank you. That brings us to community input. This is a time with anybody, and the crowd can come up and speak on anything that's not in the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes tonight, because we have quite a full agenda, so if you have something not on tonight's agenda, please come up. Lou, hi Nancy.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Beckham. I live at 337 North Lima Street. But I'm actually reading a letter that all of you received this evening from Susan Nowhausen. She cannot be here this evening, but she wanted this read into the minutes as well, although you, each of you have your own copy of this letter. She was quite concerned about some things that were mentioned at the last meeting that she felt were an error, and that's the reason for the letter. "Thank you for your thoughtful comments about the Bailey Canyon Housing Project. I wanted to address several points that were brought up at the April 7th meeting. Mrs. Dallas asked the city attorney how much the project abided by the municipal code. He said all of it did, so except for section 17. Section 17 is all about zoning, and the section 17.20 is about the R1 zoning and the requirements including setbacks, lot width, massing, gross square footage, et cetera. Therefore, this proposed specific plan does not abide by the relevant municipal code and the general plan, and therefore it violates state law 65454. That law requires that no code and general plan, and therefore violates state, excuse me, I repeated myself. That law requires that no specific plan may be adopted or amended unless the proposed plan is or amendment is consistent with the general plan. For it to follow the state law on the 9.19 acres on their specific plan allotted to houses out of the 17 acres, they could build 15 houses on what is now their average size of 3,500 square feet, which translates to a gross floor plan of 4,100 square feet. If they want 42 houses of that size, 25 acres of land will have to be used to get those amount of houses. Second, we have been told repeatedly by the city attorney that the MOU does not bind the city to approve the project. However, there appears to be pressure to approve it and to approve it quickly, as there is a bias in favor of the developer. Two examples: First, Mr. Hut asked about having Madera de la Rosa seed the land north of the retreat center at the start of the project. Rather than the city attorney saying it could be a condition under which the project is approved, he said, "We can ask the developer to consider it." Second, Vincent suggested at the next date for discussing the project to be the June meeting. The developer said that was too long, and so it was set for May 5th. If this is not a done deal, then it seems that the planning commission should be saying "if" we approve, rather than "when" we approve, when addressing the concerns. Third, the, in the IR, our limited alternatives to this, excuse me, limited alternatives to this project are presented, and the wetland, and the legitimate alternatives should be considered. The first alternative is not to develop the land. The Wetlands Land Conservancy has inquired about buying the land. They are very concerned as the land currently functions as an alluvial fund, and it will be destroyed with the construction. The city manager spoke with two people from the Wetlands Conservancy, but Rachel Aramendi, who is mayor at the time, refused to allow them to present to the city. Our state senator, Mr. Portantino, said there was available funds to buy the land and put it into a conservancy. A second alternative is the assisted living facility, but not the giant-sized one presented in the EIR. Mr. Clyde Stoff and his group offered to pay 25 million for the land at Madera de la Rosa to build a 90-unit assisted living facility. It would have a smaller footprint, not require bulldozing and grading to build three roads and tear the middle, and not destroy 101 trees, not require the widening of carter and impact, in impacting Bailey Canyon, and it would include a park. Both parties-
Sum up, please, or give us the full copy.
You all have a copy.
I know, then can sum up, can you sum up, please?
Let me just finish this last sentence, and I'll go.
Sure.
"Both parties wanted to present these alternatives to the city council and to the passions that were turned down. Another alternative is to build fewer houses and do adhere to our general plan and residential housing code section 17 dash 20. Depending on the size of the houses and based on the calculations using the municipal code, they could actually build up to 26 houses with the entire, interior square footage of 2,400 square feet and still give us a park. The city attorney stated that the 23rd house would be sufficient funds to build the park." That's you, that you have the rest of it. Thank you very much for listening to me, and we appreciate your time and energy. Thank you.
Anyone else for something not on this agenda tonight?
Hi, Ian Chesterman, Brookside Lane, Sierra Madre. Greetings, Planning Commission. Why isn't our general plan, that many worked long and hard to formulate, not even being mentioned? In the 1972 Resolution 7262 was formulated and signed by the then-mayor stating that the wildlife and natural habitats are to be protected and preserved in labeling Sierra Madre as a wildlife preserve. In many north-lining properties are under the hillside-specific plan, there is reason that cannot be even under, is there some reason they cannot even be under consideration, or at least mentioned? Why is it that an outsider can come in and thrust its intentions on us, and the people who are supposed to represent us seem unable to include those of us who live here and with the policies we have established for ourselves? I will repeat, and all of us have bills to pay. Why is land regarded as a commodity to exploit? The next time you have bills to pay and there's no land to sell, what will you do then? How about proper budgeting and financial management? Why let an outsider profit from what we hold dear? The past is past, and good stewards of a town hold to their commitments, or the past is only seen as inauthentic. If our future is in God's hands, we suggest that you invest in that trust and not abuse our God-given foundation for living on this earth. Nature, peace, and serenity are foundations for all of us, not just those who go to a retreat. Yet you find it perfectly okay to jam a congested residential development not into what is a diminishing attribute to healthy living. Los Angeles is endlessly surrounding us, and the only recourse is to move. Unfortunately, Sierra Madre cannot. It is up to us to have the courage to honor qualities of life over the imposition of money and profit. Sierra Madre has established its design and policies a long time ago. It is our job to respect and enact those policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. I'd like to thank you for your diligence in asking relevant questions of the staff and the New Urban West representative at the last meeting. I am speaking to you tonight because I have some questions and concerns. One, I assume the reserved seats in the first two rows were not sanctioned by staff. If they were, then why? I'm sure you know that over 50% of the 99 seats in chambers were filled by non-residents, including the couple who sat next to me, who kept muttering to each other that you commissioners were asking too many questions. Two, you, the commissioners, had asked for a timeline of when items would be discussed and in what order. I hope you will get an answer at the next meeting. As you know, there are lots of concerned residents on both sides of the issue, and for the sake of transparency, it would be beneficial for us to know how this all will take place. Exact dates may be impossible, but the order and ballpark time would work. Three, Director Gonzalez suggested your next meeting to discuss this important issue with New Urban West be June 2nd. Instead, Mr. Frankel asked for and got an earlier date of May 5th because, quote-unquote, "the investors want to know." So it will be May 5th. Why would you kowtow to outside interests? Four, even with the cutting of the wisteria vine, you asked for a second opinion. Yet the biologist showed up for one day, nine to five, to study the impact on the wildlife. Please ask for second opinions on the alleged no significant impact issues. Quite a few of us are very concerned about this lack of second opinions on what will impact Sierra Madre forever. Five, please ask. One Carter promised the residents would have unlimited access to the property to hike and walk their dogs. Now there are several no trespassing signs. There has been a chain across the entrance. New Urban West and the Madera de la Rosa Fathers are assuring us that three acre, that three-acre park will be open to everyone. Really? Forgive my skepticism, and once again, thank you for what you do, and I don't envy you.
Thank you.
Chair Pezner, if I can make a comment?
Yeah.
Just in response to the reservation of the seats, staff actually reserved 15 seats for the environmental consultant team. Well, they weren't sitting there.
Okay. Go ahead, next.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Swanka, and I live at 239 Wilson Street. This is the second time I am publicly speaking to the city about my unfulfilled public records request. I believe the first time I spoke was in March to the city council. I contacted Lauren Hines on January 21, 2022, asking how I go about requesting public records. She provided me with the portal link to initiate my request, and I did so at that time. I wanted copies of the filming permit and signature sheet for Paramount's January 2022 filming at Alverno, since I had never received a signature sheet and had only received a memo after filming had commenced. After 26 days, I contacted Ms. Hines again, saying that I had never received a response to my records request. Ms. Hines stated that, quote, "The records were submitted to fulfill the request, and I'm CCing the administrative manager Laura Aguilar, who will be able to further assist you," end quote. At that time, I asked Ms. Hines, Ms. Aguilar, and Rebecca Silva when I would receive the records. I did not receive an answer from anyone. After 39 calendar days, I once again emailed all three ladies, letting them know that my records request still remained unfulfilled. Once again, I received no answer. It has now been 90 calendar days, and my records request remains unfulfilled, violating Government Code Section 6253. And as an aside, after my initial January request, I learned that the signature sheets for this production were forged, and Detective Raymond So is currently investigating the matter. I have not been told that this investigation in any way prevents the fulfillment of my records request. So I would like the signature sheets emailed to me, and I don't know what other recourse I have, other than other public or legal measures to get them. I keep contacting the city, but no one will give me those records.
Are you saying your, your signature sheets are lost or not there, and someone's investigating what happened to them?
This particular production, I learned through other neighbors, the signature sheets, the names that are attached to the addresses don't match up. So for instance, my, my address is there, and it's some other random name.
Oh, I see.
And so Detective So is investigating that. He did come to my door. At that time, I did have COVID, so I only spoke to him through the doorbell. He asked me some questions, but no one's told me that because this particular production is under investigation, as far as the signature sheets are concerned, that I can't get a copy, and I can't get a copy. And my, I believe my address is on there.
Okay.
Ms., if you don't mind leaving your contact information with Ms. Lynn over there seated in the front, and I'm happy to follow up with you directly.
Thank you for your succinct presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Stevens. I live in 717 West Grandview. Sergeant So also contacted me. I'd just gotten out of the hospital, so, I was on painkillers. I have had basically three FOIA Brown Act requests, and one has only been half-fulfilled. I'm still waiting, and I think I'm getting given the runaround, and I'm going to Cal-Aware if it doesn't get fulfilled. There was filming in September in which we had questions about the documentation. My last contact was with Jose Reynoso, who said, "I'll get back to you in a week." That was prior to my surgery, and it's now been several weeks, and I still haven't heard from him. I started this quest for documents in January of 2022, as well as in September of 2021. At the time, there was no online form that I was directed to, but I did make the document request for filming documents for that particular film. I, yeah, I'm with, like, with her. Like, what do you do? There's a lot of attorneys who would just love to go sue for this kind of stuff, but I don't think our city should be tolling this type of issue. If they don't have the documents, then admit it. But these are permits that should have been provided and approved for filming. Thank you.
Ms., if you wouldn't mind also leaving your information with Ms. Lynn in front here? Thank you.
Anyone else for an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we'll move forward with the first public hearing action item, request to allow for general sales of onsite consumption of alcohol and existing restaurant at Monsieur Crepe. This will be the first public hearing item. It's going to be for the consumption of alcohol at Monsieur Crepe, located at 56 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. Do you have a presentation?
So the commission will be receiving a presentation regarding conditional use permit 2201 from Associate Planner Wolf. And he does have a PowerPoint presentation for you?
Good evening Commissioners. Tonight, the commission will be reviewing Conditional Use Permit 2201 for the use permit for Monsieur Crepe. The project location is at 54 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. This is a tenant space within the building at 48 West Sierra Madre Boulevard. The property is owned commercial, its land use is commercial, and its general neighborhood is also commercial. The applicant is requesting to expand services at Monsieur Crepe by adding beer and wine to their menu for onsite consumption. Pursuant to our Sierra Madre Municipal Code, sales of alcohol, whether for consumption on or off-site, whether alone or in conjunction with other uses, shall require approval of Conditional Use Permit. The applicant is obtaining a Department of Alcohol Beverage Control license for type 41, which authorizes the sale of beer and wine for consumption on or off-site, the premise. Here's a site photo. This is a street view image circa 2019. Since then, there has been outdoor dining, patios put in place, but this is intended to see what the building facades would look like. And you'll see Monsieur Crepe is actually just behind these purple umbrellas. Here's a closer image of the facade, and then to the right on the slide is an image of the rear. There is no active rear. And for findings of Conditional Use Permit, the proposed use is adequate in size, shape, topography, and location, in that the existing space is a bona fide restaurant within the downtown commercial core district. The site is sufficiently accessible from Sierra Madre Boulevard, as well as the Mariposa Parking Lot adjacent at the rear. Street and parking conditions are currently more than sufficient to serve the restaurant. There is no anticipated detriment to the public health, safety, and general welfare, in that the restaurant will be maintained primarily as a bona fide restaurant. The Department of ABC regulates administration licensing and complacency with regard to impacts of public health and safety by alcohol consumption. Conditions are also in place to ensure the public safety and complacency with city ordinances. The applicant has stated the need for the use is derived from the popular demand and would serve to help the business grow. The restaurant is a pedestrian generating use located along a primary commercial corridor promoting business retention. The proposed project would also be consistent with the general plan, specifically objectives L3, L33, L35, and policy L35.2 through enhancing the downtown commercial core district. The proposed use would be a benefit to the public interest in being a suitable use for the downtown commercial core, where other similar uses are operating with alcohol uses. Tonight, the Planning Commission can approve Resolution 2213, which approves Conditional Use Permit 2201. They can approve the resolution with modifications. They can deny the resolution, or continue the project and provide the applicant with direction. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2213 to approve Conditional Use Permit 2201. That should not say "adopt initial study," I'm sorry. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant has also joined us tonight, who might have a presentation or introduction. I'm open for questions. If not, then we also have the applicant here.
Any questions at this point, at this juncture?
Thank you.
Sure. Is the applicant, I want to make a statement, or come up and just tell us what your plan is, maybe?
Hi Commissioners, my name is Catherine Kim, and I represent Monsieur Crepe. We joined the team just last year. We're really excited to be part of Sierra Madre, so thank you everybody for being so welcoming. My husband and I are Southern California natives. We grew up right in South Pasadena, went to USC for undergrad and med school, so we're really excited to be back in the community after we've been off in different parts of the country for about 11 years. So we, we are applying for the Conditional Use Permit so that we can serve beverages with our crepes that would complement the meal. So we're looking at things like, you know, bellinis and mimosas for breakfast, brunch type of foods. So appreciate your time. Thank you for considering our application. Any questions at all? Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Any other, other questions of staff, clarification of law? Okay, then we'll open it up to a public comment. Anybody wants to speak on this matter, for or against, or seeing no one? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission then. Anyone with initial comments, or?
I think it's a crime that a French restaurant can't serve French wine. I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, I, I think the only problem here is you guys aren't open for dinner, and I hope that this will help you remedy that.
We really are hoping to. It's a staffing issue.
You have to-
Oh, sorry, sorry. You know, for us, it's a, it's a staffing issue. As you know, everywhere is short-staffed right now, but we would love to extend our hours. We're looking first to extend just a little bit on the weekend hours, because I know a lot of people like that atmosphere on the Friday and Saturday evenings. So as soon as we can, we will.
Is, is your husband the, the chef that's a physician?
He's not, no, so, um-
A lot of doctors involved, huh?
I'm a physician by training, so my husband and I both went to USC med school, and then we served with the US Air Force. So we were out in Ohio and Mississippi, and moving back to Southern California, we were actually super thrilled to find Sierra Madre, because it's got that small-town feel that is pretty rare in the LA suburbs that we really miss from Ohio and Mississippi. So, but no, we were able to take over from the previous owner, but keep the head chef, the line cook, the server, so all the staff has stayed.
So it's a change of ownership?
Correct. So we bought it over last year from the original owner, so, yeah. So we joined the team just last year.
Okay, great. Well, anything to make it a continual going concern?
Yeah, thank you so much.
One thing we did, when we approved the alcohol licenses for, I think, the brewery and Sierra Bistro, is we moved the hours back for Friday and Saturday night, from 10 to midnight. And I, you might not have any plans to do that now, but I would prefer to keep that consistent. I wouldn't have any problems with that, and I don't think that if they changed their business plan and wanted to be open later on Friday and Saturday night, we'd want to haul them back in here for another CUP. So I, I would be good with the CUP as is, except changing the hours on Friday and Saturday night to midnight.
Didn't we change the start time as well when we did Sierra Bistro?
Yeah, maybe, but I think on this one, they, they already have an earlier time because they were going to do brunch, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't, if, if, if there's any, I, I want to be accommodating to, to our area restaurants and businesses, and especially ones that I like to eat at, so. I, I think if they, they do change their plan and want to open later on those nights, we should allow them.
Okay. Peggy?
I think that's a great idea, and I hope they open for dinner also.
That would be fantastic.
I move that we approve Conditional Use Permit number 22 dash 01 with the edit of the time to midnight.
A second?
Yeah, a second.
Very good. A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. All right, we'll move on to item number two, the request to allow for off-sale beer and wine, distilled spirits, in addition to instructional tasting at the existing company, at Taylor's Old Fashioned Market.
And we have another, another PowerPoint presentation by Associate Planner Wolf.
Hopefully, this is a change of mood for Planning Commission. Second presentation tonight in public hearing is for the Conditional Use Permit 2202 for Taylor's Old Fashioned Market at 14 East Sierra Madre Boulevard. The project is located at the intersection of- The project is located at the intersection of Baldwin and Sierra Madre Boulevard. It's owned commercial with a land use commercial and in a general neighborhood of commercial and multifamily residential. The applicant is requesting to expand services at the Taylor's Old Fashioned Market grocery store by adding a selection of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for instructional tasting and onsite consumption. Again, pursuant to our Sierra Madre Municipal Code, permitting alcohol sales, whether for onsite or offsite consumption, requires approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant has applied for Department of ABC License Types 21 and 86 permitting the off-sales in general for beer, wine, and distilled spirits as well as their instructional tasting onsite. Here are some site photos. On the top left, we have viewed as southward from Sierra Madre Boulevard. On the top right is viewed eastward from Baldwin. On the bottom left is viewed north from its parking lot and on the bottom right is viewed west from its other parking lot. Findings for conditional use permit, the proposed use is adequate in size, shape, topography, and location in that the grocery store has an underutilized interior space to accommodate the use without major tenant improvement. The site is sufficiently accessible from Sierra Madre Boulevard and Baldwin Avenue as well as from the south Baldwin Avenue parking lot adjacent to the south. Street parking and conditions are currently more than sufficient to serve the grocery store without added use. There is no anticipated detriment to the public health, safety, and general welfare in that the restaurant will be maintained primarily as a grocery store. The Department of ABC regulates administration licensing and compliance with regard to impacts of public health and safety by alcohol consumption. Conditions are also in place to ensure the public safety and compliance with the city ordinances. The applicant has stated the need for the use is derived from market competition and would serve to help the business grow. Adding the use to the grocery store is located along two primary commercial corridors promoting business retention. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan, specifically objectives L3, L33, L35, and policy L35.2 through enhancing the downtown commercial core district. The proposed use would benefit the public interest in being suitable for the downtown use where there are similar uses operating with alcohol uses. Tonight, the Planning Commission may approve Resolution 2209, which approves conditional use permit 2202. They may approve the resolution with modifications, deny the resolution, or continue the project and provide applicant with direction. Same error on this, I'm sorry. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2209, there is no initial study for this. The applicant is also here tonight. I'm open for questions, but if there aren't any, the applicant, I believe the applicant would like to introduce himself.
Josh, I got a question. What are the extra fees that are associated with this, municipal versus the ABC license?
The fees associated for a conditional use permit, there are city-set fees. I believe it's about $6,300 for a conditional use permit application.
I meant for the ongoing license for this, additional licensing for this permitted use.
Additional licensing isn't done through the city, so I'm not aware of what those fees would be.
Okay, I just, okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Come on.
Good evening Commissioners. My name's Kevin Taylor. I'm representing Taylor's Old Fashioned Market tonight. Taylor's was started the day I was born, September 23rd, 1966. We were here in Upper Hastings Ranch. My grandfather, my dad, and my Uncle Merle started it. We were Taylor's Old Fashioned Meat Markets. We had four locations and in 2005, when Howie shut down, my dad just had the butcher shop there, as many of you may remember. In 2006, my dad expanded into produce and we had limited grocery. My dad passed away in November and as we've expanded the grocery and other parts of the store, we renamed our market to Taylor's Old Fashioned Market from Taylor's Old Fashioned Meat Market. So, we continue to expand our offerings. We're expanding to a deli, we expanded our grocery, and many of you that shop with our store know that the north side is not being used right now where we're expanding there. So, we're going to take over the whole store and that's where we're going to be planning on putting our wine. And we'd like to ask for your consideration, the approval of this conditional use permit for off-sale beer and wine. We're not going to do distilled spirits at this time, just the beer and wine, and then also instructional tasting for beer and wine as well. So, we employ many of the local Sierra Madre residents and we're just happy to have them work for us. And just thank you for your consideration tonight of approving our conditional use permit and I'll be happy to take any questions.
First of all, I want to, you had Frank Van Winkle as a butcher and he was on the volunteer fire department with us.
Yes, that's correct.
But when Frank worked there, I remember having been around, that being able to use to, I used to buy beer and wine at that location. Did that license go when Howie's went and you're replacing it?
That's correct. What actually happened, and correct me if I'm wrong Joshua, but when I went to consider, I went to ABC and they said I had to go to the city for the CUP, there was no record on file of a conditional use permit with that property. And what we kind of surmised is the fact that Roberts Market was there and it was continuous when Duncan Howe, Mr. Howie, Duncan Howie took it over and then the Pacano family took it over. It just kind of passed through. But there was no CUP that I'm aware of, that we couldn't find any paperwork within the city records. And so, that's why we wanted just to basically start over, get everything on file from this point forward.
And I just wanted to, excuse me, I just wanted to clarify that you're not changing your request for distilled, you're just not going to stock them yet?
Correct.
Correct, great.
Yeah, I have a question. We have a map or a diagram of the store area in our staff packet that shows the general area, but are you going to change the entry at all or is it going to, are you going to access that part through the current doors that you have? Or are you going to have like separate doors for that or how are you going to do that?
It's going to be the same doors and really that has to do with more of just theft challenges.
Sure.
Many, many years ago, when Mr. Howie owned it, there was doors in the back, there was many more doors and entrance, exit points. We've met with the fire department and we have egress doors that are available, but we are going to keep our, I think we have three entrance and exit points right now for the location.
Have you developed a program for the instructional tasting or are you going to figure that out later as you go?
Really, really what we're trying to do right now is just bring the beer and wine in.
Yep.
And then maybe add that down the road.
Okay.
But it's not something that we're going to do from the offset.
Peggy, any questions for the applicant? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody from the public want to come up and speak on this issue? Great, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
I think similar to the last one, I think that we should conform all of the hours from 7:00 to 10:00 so that they don't have to come back before us if they decide to change their hours. I know they're not open until 10:00 today, but should anything change, that would be my one recommendation.
Yeah, I'm good with that and I obviously don't have any issues with this. There used to be alcohol sales at this site before and it probably predated the rules that you needed a CUP. So, I don't have any problem formalizing it now and granting the CUP.
I think it's a great idea.
I think we're doing good work here tonight.
I move that we approve conditional use permit 22-02 with the edit to the times?
I have a question just for clarification on the edits. Let me pull up the...
So, Sunday is the only day that's currently not 7:00 to 10:00 and so I would recommend editing Sunday from 7:00 to 10:00.
And not Friday, Saturday, to midnight, is that correct?
I think they're just looking to sell it. I don't think they're looking to consume it onsite other than the instructional tasting, so I didn't feel the need to go to midnight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're going to do wine tasting.
Okay, so just every day of the week is 7:00 to 10:00, correct? Okay, got it.
Correct, every day of the week, 7:00 to 10:00. So, I move that we approve conditional use permit 22-02 with the edit of every day of the week being from 7:00 to 10:00 PM for deconsumption.
I'll second that.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. That brings us to item number three. I guess this is a reboot of what we went before to consider Resolution 2204 to main chapter 1722, second units for the Sierra Madre Municipal Code to conform to state law.
Yes, the Planning Commission has reviewed this, the second unit ordinance as a discussion item and looked at the proposed amendments. Staff is returned to respond to your questions. And again, Associate Planner Wolf has a presentation.
Commissioners, on the days in front of you, I have some updated reports for you. This is just a minor, on the report, it's just a minor correction that resolution should read 2204, not 2104. And then I also have a summary of edits that were made over time as well behind the staff report update. And I'll go over those in my presentation tonight. So, at the discussion held on March 17th last month, the commission selected the ordinance version four, which included the baseline ordinance, the design and development and regulation addendum, and the historic entry preservation addendum with the following edits: to delete and leave silent building and design standards for detached units to promote unique design and to allow for differentiation with relation to historic properties. Second, to delete the language requiring pitched roofs when the primary unit does not have a pitched roof. And those were addendums, if I remember right, to 1722-03-0 subsection A, paragraphs one and three, deletions of those. Following the meeting for the discussion, staff discussed the ordinance with city building official. It was recommended that language be deleted that requires a minimum of 220 square feet and instead defer the requirement to the California Building Code. Staff discovered an inconsistency in section 1728-05-0, this is our R3 medium-high-density residential zone, and proposes amendments that would allow...
Sorry Josh.
Yep.
What does the building code call out if it's not 220?
220 square feet is derived from that building code, but it's not specifically stated at 220. It's implied by the minimum living area of 150 square feet plus the combined 70 square feet for a bathroom and kitchen, but it's not explicitly 220 square feet.
Okay. So, but functionally, it's going to be 220 unless they've modified the floor plan?
Well, it's going to be functionally 220 square feet unless the building code suddenly requires less square feet or male...
Tying into the building code as opposed to our, okay, got it.
Correct.
So, if the building code modifies to 210 or 230, we're just, as opposed to 220, we just track?
Correct, yeah.
That saves us a lot of work.
Yep.
And just to recap, there was inconsistency in the R3 zone for its permitted uses. There is only allowed use of ADU in a tier 1.5. So, the changes to that is to get rid of tier 1.5 and have tier one absorb the land use sizes of tier 1.5 and then just allow ADUs across the board in R3. And that was the summary of all the edits made since we brought this to the commission on the 17th of March. Tonight, the Planning Commission may approve Resolution 2204 recommending city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 1708, 17.22, and 17.28 of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Planning Commission may approve the resolution with modifications, continue the consideration, or deny Resolution 2204. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2204 recommending city council adopt the ordinance as presented. That concludes my presentation and I am open for questions.
Peggy, go ahead.
What is a silent building and design standard?
So, they're left silent so that it remains open to interpretation. It's really not a hard restriction, rather it's an open way and to say, and allow for differentiation. The example case being a project that was presented to the Planning Commission some time ago of a modern farmhouse and its ADU was basically a rehabilitated train car. And if we hadn't had that requirement for consistency in design between two detached structures, we wouldn't have been able to get that train car in place. So, leaving, the term, the language I use when I say leaving silent is just to not define hard restrictions for detached units.
Okay, that I understand. Can we just say that?
Yeah, essentially.
I had one question on the change in R3, which I think makes sense, but I just wanted to make sure, we don't have any references to tier 1.5 anywhere else in the code?
That's a good point. I'm not entirely sure, but I will check into that.
Okay, I think when we approve this, I think we should just note that, you know, the staff could do a search for that and fix any stray references if there are any.
Will do.
Any other questions? Oh, I thought you were going to say something, okay. All right, thank you Josh.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public want to come and speak on this issue? This item? Seeing none, all right. Close the public comment and come back to the commission. Any last thoughts, changes, thoughts?
I think staff did a great job in taking our comments and reflecting them in the code and I think there's one little bit of homework for them to do and just to double check, but other than that, I think it's good to go and I think we can, I'm good to recommend approval to the city council to adopt these.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Was that a motion?
Sure.
I will second the motion.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Seeing none, passes unanimously, wonderful. That brings us to the other reboot item of the municipal, item number four, consideration of municipal tech, code text amendment, ordinance cleanups, MCTA 2205, I guess.
Yes, as you can tell, Josh is the only planner in the department who actually does work. So, we do have another PowerPoint presentation or presentation from our Associate Planner Wolf.
Yeah, no PowerPoint this time, I didn't think that was necessary. Instead, I just have a report, a basic, since our last discussion, when I presented all of the cleanup ordinance items, it was recommended by Planning Commission to delete the additions of covered parking from the R2 zone. And so, that was done and as presented tonight, there are no additions to the R2 to require covered parking. That concludes my report.
And so, all the other revisions from last time are the same?
That's correct.
Okay.
No questions?
No questions?
Peggy, no?
It's nice to see that an architect put in, into the code, so I'm looking forward to that. Should make everybody's life a lot easier.
Agreed.
Any one from the public want to speak on this item? Great, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve consideration of municipal code text amendment and the ordinance cleanup, MCTA 22-05.
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously, wonderful. And number five on our agenda, consideration of municipal code text amendments regarding chapter 17.88 temporary use permits zoning, it's title 17 zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code.
I will be making a brief presentation, just to let you know back, we, the Planning Commission reviewed the temporary use permit as a discussion item on March 17th, 2022, and the commission listened to both public testimony and held the discussion item on the proposed ordinance amendments that we presented at that time, amending chapter 17.88 temporary use permits. This evening, the commission is conducting a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments and approve Resolution number 22-12 recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 17.88. And alternatively, the commission may approve the ordinance amendments with modifications or continue the matter and providing staff with direction. I also wanted to point out... I also wanted to point out that at this time, staff will go through the ordinance amendments that we reviewed the last time, but only focusing on the specific changes. I left those, a review of the ordinance for your perusal at the dais, and I'll point out what those changes were. I also wanted to point out that both Jennifer Peterson and our city attorney are both available to answer questions from the commission. So, provided the ordinance amendments, as you can see on the screen, specifically, the only change that was made by the commission the last time we reviewed this was under section 17.88.020, allowable uses of permits, and it is B2. And as you can see, the very minor change in terms of frequency of use went from six, was presented with six hours, and the planning commission amended that to four, or four times per a 12-month period in lieu of the six. So that was the first change. And the second change is shown on section 17.88.030, temporal, temporary use permit application, and that is item H. So item H is a new, newly introduced section that was discussed by the commission. The planning commission expressed concern that an independent third, third-party monitor was not present at, for large events, and the planning commission wanted to verify whether applicants were actually abiding by the terms of the TUP. So the planning commission recommended requiring an event monitor for large events to address the concern, and staff proposed the language that you see before you, amending or adding section 17.88.030H to the code section. And it's essentially indicating that a temporary, if you have a temporary use permit, and you have more than 100 persons in attendance, that an event monitor, monitor, third-party event monitor shall be hired, and the cost of the event monitor will be paid directly to the city and reimbursed by the applicant.
So, point of clarification, so the event monitor isn't necessarily a city employee, it's someone there just to gather the facts?
Yes.
So that the city will have a record of, a third-party record of what happened?
Yes.
And so, we're halfway through that feedback loop where then, if the event monitor reports that, you know, the Spears family picnic got out of control, and there was fights and people in the street and whatever, then I assume there will be a policy or something that says that, you know, they don't get a permit the next time, or something like that?
We could certainly apply that, yes.
Okay. But it'll be based on the, on the report of the event monitor as opposed to citizens pointing at each other and yelling?
Right.
Okay.
I've got a question. I don't see any language referring to a report being made by the event monitor, or the nature of the report.
I think we could handle that as a policy matter, more administrative matter, once we hire or consult with an event monitor and prepare supporting materials for them to report back to staff.
And how would that list of things being reported be created?
I would assume that, looking at parking impacts and how that impacts the street, if it's a large event, one of the conditions of approval most likely will be that they have to provide parking onsite, which would not be possible. Then what would occur is the parking would have to occur offsite, and a shuttle van or bus would bring patrons to the event in that fashion. Another issue could be noise, so they could monitor and actually monitor the noise through the use of a noise meter and capture that, and also, you know, talk to the, the host directly and see if that, any issues that arise could be mitigated immediately. Any other feedback from both, from either Jen Peterson or our city attorney?
Go ahead.
To direct, I mean, to address Director Spears' concern, we may want to include a sixth finding in the temporary use permit findings that says something like, the applicant hasn't submitted, or hasn't been found to be in violation of one of the conditions of their temporary use permit within X number of months. So on that basis, we could, so if they have violated a condition of their temporary use permit within X number of months, we could deny them a future permit that they apply for, something to consider.
It wouldn't just be policy, it would be in the, yeah, I like that.
It'd be a finding in the, to, to issue a temporary use permit.
Okay.
That concludes staff presentation. If any other questions?
Just a question on the monitor's fee, and how that would, and how he would be chosen?
We would have to, a lot of time, many times, monitors are actually off-duty police officers, so we would have to outreach to the police department in other cities to see how they provide these types of services.
Okay, and is there a standard fee for that, or can we derive what that fee would be so that the applicant knows what they're sort of going to be paying?
We would, we would outreach to other cities as well to make that determination. Lot of, many times, it would be cost recovery, in this case, cost recovery would be fairly minimal in terms of staff cost. I wouldn't, I would not assume that it would be that expensive. And then determination of what the hourly rate would be for the monitor.
Okay. Something, maybe we can put language in there that says something to the fact that it's reasonable?
Usually for, for cost recovery or cost analysis, that would go to city council for their review, but...
I, I would only add that cost recovery is the standard, so the city can't make a profit off of issuing these permits. And so, whatever that cost would be, whether it's $500 or $100, it would be solely for the purpose of the city recovering its costs for paying an event monitor.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, if the monitors themselves decide to, you know, my standard fee's, you know, $2,500, you know, or something like that for an event, even if it's, you know what I mean, some range, something, language that says reasonable, I don't know how we can...
It's whatever they charge. We could have a list like we do for, we want to do for Arboris, and something that, of people who will do it at a, you know, at a guaranteed price, but I think the money issue needs to be handled by city council and staff.
Yeah, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that's included into it, so we don't get into a problem where everybody's complaining that the, there's some kind of, I mean, I'm just thinking worst-case scenario, but, okay. All right, any other questions? Peggy?
I, I'm still a little concerned that, given what's said here, that a monitor will be hired, and oh, yes, there, there weren't any problems, and that will be the extent of the report, and we'll have no way to compare, you know, apples to oranges, apples to apples, from one event to another. If they had a, if we had some sort of set list of parameters, that every event, every, you know, hour, there's got to be at least one desk still reading, or the, the parking, you know, they, they'd have to check off a, a list of parameters each time, I think we'll have more responsible and comparable reporting.
Yeah, we, we certainly could include that administratively, as we further develop how this process will work.
Commissioner Dallas, you're also welcome to, to work with staff in helping create such a checklist if you're interested in, in promoting something, something like that in the city.
Any other questions? No? Okay, anyone in the public want to come and speak on this item?
I actually just have a quick question. My name is Lisa Puleo, and I live at 672 West Island. My only question is, is that will the neighbors be able to contact the monitor, or will this be posted on the website? So when an event occurs that does have 100 people, and there is a monitor, can we reach that monitor for whatever complaints we may have on that particular evening?
So, I, I believe the intent of having an event monitor is so that they serve as the point of contact for the city and for residents, so that'll be for staff to determine how best to put that info, to make that information, to make the event monitor's contact information available for the public. That's something that staff will need to, to figure out.
Excellent, I think it's a great idea, thank you.
Cynthia Swanka, 239 Wilson Street, and I live across from Alverno, so is what's being discussed here, does that apply to the annual TUP that Alverno has, or is that a separate animal? I'm not sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Alverno has an annual TUP. Currently, they're in the process of updating their master plan, and the commission has had discussions regarding the use of a TUP for an institutional use, and we are working with the, with the Alverno administration to actually eliminate the CUP process and have a conditional use permit requirement for, for events and filming at that campus.
Okay, because it's, I would want to be able to contact a city department when noise violation happens in real time, and for those complaints to be recorded. And then I'm hoping if there's many violations, that recipients for TUP would either be fined or have their TUP revoked, or have their next application denied, so. There doesn't seem to, right now, when there is noise violations, there doesn't seem to be any recourse, or any record kept of those.
And when the commission actually reviews the additional conditional use permit for filming or events at the campus, that's certainly a condition that we could apply, having an event monitor, very similar as we would utilize that for temporary use permit.
That's on our, it's also on the agenda here, discussion.
Standby.
Yeah. Very good, thank you. Anyone else?
So I wasn't clear. Will there be event monitors at Alverno? Will they still have the annual TUP?
When this ordinance is codified, which I would imagine another month, and we put all requirements in place, if we have not brought back the master plan for the Alverno master plan update, along with the CUP, then yes, it would apply.
Yes, thank you, Chair, commissioners and staff. My name's Ken Farsing, I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees for Alverno Heights Academy. Alverno's provided the commission with, with a letter, you should have that, and we feel there's some issues that need to be addressed within the proposed ordinance. Now, our letter supplements the presentation in our letter from March 16th to the commission, where the school committed to applying for a conditional use permit for the Villa's special events, and will be submitting the conditional use permit application in June. Now, the Villa's been used continuously for special events during the last four decades. Originally, the city required that the school apply for an annual special use permit. In 2009, city staff directed the school to apply for a temporary use permit for the Villa, while the school's master plan amendment was being processed, with the requirement that the school apply for a conditional use permit after the master plan amendment was approved. Now, the school in good faith applied for a conditional use permit for the Villa when the master plan was approved in 2011. However, city staff at that time stated that an ordinance code amendment to the institutional zone was required in order to process the conditional use permit for the Villa. The school was directed to renew, basically come in and apply for a temporary use permit for the Villa while the master plan amendment was being processed. Now, the school, again, we applied for the, the CUP when the master plan was approved in 2011, but again, the staff told us that they needed an ordinance code amendment for a conditional use permit in the institutional zone for assembly-type uses. And so we, at that point, were directed to renew the Villa's temporary use permit, and staff continued to work on the ordinance amendment. Now, as pointed out in our letter, the school did not receive information from the staff that the zoning code had been amended, and the school continued to apply for annual renewals of the temporary use permit, which were routinely granted by city staff for the last 12 years, with no request for a conditional use permit. Now, relying on this precedent, the school entered into binding contracts for a number of weddings, receptions, and other special events. There are 23 events contracted through August of 2024 at the Villa. Now, 16 of these events are religious in nature. Please note that it's not unusual for an event like a wedding to be planned over a year in advance, and venues can be booked years in advance. Now, Alverno requested the commission consider adding language to the proposed ordinance that will recognize contracts entered into prior to the effective date of the ordinance. The ordinance currently does not contain a provision to protect the city and the school from the consequences of event cancellation. Now, the school has met with the city planning staff and the city attorney, and we agreed that the conditional use permit is the proper application for the Villa's special events. The school believes that it will be able to demonstrate that the Villa's events provide a critical revenue source for the maintenance, operation, and restoration of the historic Villa and grounds, and that there is a fair and reasonable need for special events. I thank you for consideration of our request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ken.
I have a question.
Yes.
You've come and presented a great number of times to this commission about the work that your, your, your school is doing. Can you, can you explain to us the animosity in the neighborhood?
I don't know if I can, I mean, it's one of those things where the, you know, when we do, when you look at the school's mailing list, you know, we're required to mail within 300 feet of the school for applications, there's almost 300 people on that list, so it's a very, you know, it's an 11-acre property, it's very large, and, you know, sure, there's a condo building in Pasadena that, you know, contains, you know, 40 or 50 units, but for the, the bulk of the majority are basically single-family homes in the neighborhood, in Pasadena and in Sierra Madre. So, you know, we, we do our best to work with the neighbors, and we, we do our best to apply to the, basically abide by the city's ordinances, noise ordinance in particular. So, I mean, if I knew, if, basically if I knew and I could solve the issues, we would be, we, you know, work with the neighbors to try to do that.
I mean, it's just that, you know, in my tenure here, that this has been something that's been ongoing for the last, you know, many years, and it, we don't have it at any other school, or any other real institution, and it, I don't know, it just is, it's, it's, it's a puzzle, and it, it's not just the film permits, it's the, it's the noise, it's the parking, it's the driving, it's all the things, and so, whatever it is, about your school operations, your relationship with your neighbors is fraught, and I, my sense is that they're running out of patience, and things are going to get escalated, and, you know, it's going to end up costing everybody a lot of money, and I don't see that it needs to be that way.
Well, in '29 and 2010, as part of the master plan process, the city recommended that we hire a facilitator and meet with the neighbors, and a committee was put together. And that committee, it was headed by MIG as the facilitator, and they put together a list of 40 conditions, over 40 conditions, that eventually were folded into the temporary use permit. And we work hard at complying with those conditions, and we're not opposed to, when we do the conditional use permit, looking at those, taking a hard look at those 40 conditions, to see if there's ones that aren't working, or could be tweaked, or maybe there's some additional new conditions that might help.
Well, you sir has always presented a, 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 a good presentation for the school, and it's always, I'm always happy to see you come, but I'm, what I'm afraid of is that somehow, between you and what's happening on the street, you know, on Wilson and Grandview and Sunnyside, is not reflect, it doesn't reflect your, you know, hard work.
Well, again, I, I...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm making the point, that, because we're, you know, today, everybody on this commission received multiple... everybody on this commission received multiple emails of complaints and concerns that are a rehash of things that we've heard many, many times before.
Right.
And, and the tone of them is getting more and more frustrating. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of puzzled as to, you know, where this is going to go. And what we, you know, some of this is outside of our jurisdiction and our, our ability to solve.
Right.
So.
I mean, you have certain codes and ordinances that are set up for, I would say, for everyone to be good neighbors. Noise ordinance is, is one of those. And we work to comply with the noise ordinance.
Okay.
Now, you know, the neighbors may not like that noise ordinance, but we're not violating the noise ordinance, so.
Okay. I'm just, you know, it's a simple point.
Yeah. And I also think, again, we, when we go, when we bring the conditional use permit forward, I think we'll present information. The Villa is listed as a city historic landmark. The school didn't ask for that designation, though we're okay with that designation. That building's going to be 100 years old. It was started construction in 1923 and in 1925. It's going to be 100 years old. And it needs a heck of a lot of maintenance and upkeep. And while the community in general, Sierra Madre and a lot of our residents, enjoy the Villa and feel it's a very good resource, it's not maintenance-free. So.
Yeah, I'm.
And, and we, we can get into more detail on those issues when we have the hearing on the conditional use permit.
Yeah, this isn't about the maintenance of the Villa. It's about the relationship between the school and its neighbors.
Well, yeah, again, we're, we're probably straying into areas that once we bring our application forward, we'll have more information for you.
We'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to bring to the commission's attention three relevant timelines here. The first relevant timeline is the TUP that Alverno is currently operating under. So right now, their TUP is set to expire in August, if I'm not mistaken. So that's the first relevant timeline. The second is this ordinance here. This ordinance is going to amend TUPs generally throughout the city. And if, if the planning commission decides to recommend that today, it'll go to the city council probably sometime in May or maybe early June. And there's going to be two readings for that, so it has to happen on two separate meetings. And then it takes effect 30 days thereafter. So this ordinance, even if, even if the planning commission acts on it today, will probably take effect sometime around end of July, August. That's the, that's the second timeline. The third relevant timeline is the conditional use permit that, that Mr. Farsing was talking about. So that conditional use permit ideally will come before this planning commission, before their August TUP runs and before this temporary use permit ordinance amendment takes effect in order for them to continue to operate under the, under the conditions of a new conditional use permit that, that this body will consider.
And so just to clarify what you're saying, the TUP amendment that we're looking at here has nothing to do with the CUP amendment that we are likely to see with regards to the update of the specific plan?
If, if the CUP is approved before August, then yes. If, if the CUP is brought before this planning commission and approved after August, then this TUP will take effect and will bind Alverno.
Unless ministerially, the, it gets rolled over for another year.
But this, but this ordinance will be binding then. Because it, it's set to expire in August and this ordinance will likely be in effect in August, assuming it moves forward.
Is there a way we can just extend the current one for a couple of months or something? Just so we make sure that there's not a break so that, you know, people have to cancel their weddings, but we don't give a giant loophole that, that people can keep doing events without the kind of supervision that we want to put in, in the CUP?
We certainly can do that. We don't have to renew their TUP as an annual TUP. We can do it on a month-to-month or, you know, two-month basis, every two months, until the CUP is in place.
I, but I think the preference is that we process the CUP so we have something in place.
Questions? Yeah, go ahead. We're still open for public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the neighbors and your question, Mr. Spears. And that you will, I, I would assume if you look at the complaints that you're getting, there are a lot of familiar names because we do have neighbors that we have, we are continuing to try to work with that we still haven't come to an agreement with. And so, but there are 250 other neighbors that don't seem to have a problem with us and that, for example, we had a gala the other night, or in March, that I'm sure you've all heard about. And we had a lot of neighbors that showed up to the event that they were invited to. Everybody had been invited to it, the ones on the perimeter. And they came and they said how much they love us and if there's ever anything we need. But, you know, for tonight, we didn't think we needed them. But we're going to make sure that we do reach out to the neighbors that keep telling us we have no problem. And so there are those neighbors and, you know, and usually, and I, and I understand, you know, the neighbors that are here tonight and the neighbors that you hear from are the ones that have concerns that we are still working on. It's one of those problems that we just have to keep at.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chiwi Chow and I'm at 1145 North Michelinda on the Pasadena side. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I do want to address the comment I just heard regarding, you know, many neighbors not having a problem. Well, that's great. I wish I was one of those neighbors. I don't look for a problem. I have better things to do than to be here tonight. Okay, with respect to the gala, and I did mention it to Alverno when I was at the neighborhood meeting, I could hear that music blasting in my house with my double-pane windows shut. Okay? I, I knew it was a school event. I did not call the police, but I shouldn't have to live with that year after year after year. How would you like it on a Saturday night? Or your young children calling you to let you know that they can't sleep because of the music from Alverno? This is what I have lived with and some of my neighbors, those of my neighbors who are unfortunate enough to live in the path of that noise. It's been over 20 years. My kids don't want to stay in that house. And I, I mentioned it at one of the neighborhood meetings. You know, my plan was to leave the house for my kids. They don't want it because you know what they said? We don't want to deal with Alverno. Would you like that for your kids? Would you like that for you? So, you know, I support Alverno. You know, I, but whatever they do cannot be at the expense of the neighbors, cannot be at the expense of me, my family or my other neighbors. I, I had a meeting with a group of neighbors years ago with your acting chief one year, many years ago. Very nice gentleman. And my question to him was, what is an acceptable decibel reading? He said, that's not relevant. If you are in your home and you are disturbed by noise from Alverno, that is not acceptable. And there are people who agree with that. Would you agree with that? If you had to endure this year after year after year, how would you feel? We need to find a way where Alverno can continue to do what they're doing. You know, the good that they're doing. You know, I, I hear that, you know, we need to have the filming because of the scholarships we offer. But it cannot be at the expense of the neighbors. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Wow, my day in court. This is exciting. My name is Carolyn Halpern. I am a 65-year resident of Pasadena. I was two years old. My parents bought the house at 1105 Michelina in Pasadena. At that time, it was nuns across the street. And my mother used to tell me, if you see three nuns, honey, that means good luck. So make a wish. Gone a long way since those days. It's a cacophony of constant sound, noise, can't get into my driveway. But I, I want to, I want to, I wonder why. Mrs. Fenara lives in La La Land. In November, when you spoke, you all spoke. And Mr. Spears, I'm about to give you a hug any minute because when you said that no other school gives you this much trouble, I work for Sierra Madre Elementary School. I'm very proud of the fact that we don't do anything like this. In November, when you all spoke and said, even at the end of the meeting when people had left, you know, we got to talk to people about this. 90% of the filming goes on here. Alverno, speak with your neighbors. Well, you know what they did? They thumbed their noses at all of you. They had, maybe it was filming, but then they had some of the loudest events they ever had following that. That's not following what you're asking. They do not reach out to their neighbors. They don't. I've asked six times. And if you want to talk about the planning, I'll be here. Because nobody was more adversely affected by those trailers than my home. So I know everything about what they do, how they do it. They don't follow rules. They just do what they want to do. And I know that the filming, that's a whole other issue. But they don't reach out. And Ken Farsing, you grew up with me. Be decent. Thank you.
Thank you. Please don't call out other people's names in the, if you're going to speak. Go ahead.
Okay. So it was a fine question asked and some anecdotes to the animosity between the, the school and the neighbors. Oh, I'm sorry. Keith Stevens, Grandview Avenue. Alverno rep was just up here talking about the neighbors at the event praising the school. But my comment is if so many people are happy with and supporting the school, why do the studios have to forge signatures to get movie approval? As a neighbor, as someone who canvases my neighborhood, I can tell you that there is not this great support. Regarding the gala, we were sitting in our living room that night and we could hear the auctioneer crystal clear. As we were eating dinner, we were debating to ourselves. And mind you, we're 100 yards or more from, from where the event was taking place with our doors shut and we can hear the details of each item that's going up for auction. And then the music starts, which got louder. At the neighborhood meeting, put on by Alverno a couple of weeks later, they got up there and said that the police came by there a couple of times, checked noise levels and they said everything was okay. Where we were checking the noise levels outside of our house and they were, they were not okay. So just the, the disjunct, the discord between what's going on and what they're feeling and what us neighbors are, are actually hearing and living with inside our homes, they're, they're different realities. And one more, one more story to go along. Last time I spoke here, in your last meeting, I talked about the explosion in April 2019 where they exploded a four-car garage, shook our house, brought my wife to tears. We contacted the movie studio and expressed our displeasure. And we were on the verge of getting some compensation from them when Alverno stepped in and specifically told them not to deal with us, that we were thorns in the side and, and that was the end of that. So we put up with all this stuff. We are not allowed to complain or, or get reimbursement for anything. And it's, it's just a one-sided argument. And there is a lot of animosity and for them to come up here and not know, I think just says it all. They, they don't know. Thank you.
Kristen Stevens. I'd just like a rebuttal. There are not 250 neighbors that surround the school, so that's an overreach. My husband and I canvassed the neighborhood when we needed to find out what the temperature was. And we provided you with the petition that showed you otherwise. The compensation, they actually did not respond to us. And I contacted Fenara. They, they have the letters. They know why we are upset. But the compensation is we have a broken beam and broken vintage ceramic tile in our home. Our home is 126 years old. But we were never compensated for that. So I'd like to say, I don't know where they're getting their numbers from, but I think they're really overinflated. And it was unfortunate that I had to call twice to ask that the auctioneer be turned down. And what happened was at the expansion meeting, it was not exactly a neighborhood meeting, we were told that, well, they were working on it, but they just really couldn't get it to turn down. So we, when we called the police, we asked from this last meeting, we said, we are making this a complaint. We want this registered as a complaint that the noise is too loud. We do have noise readings. We use a noise app to record it. And I'd like to say, I hope at some point, you're, it seems like the CUP that you're doing, that you get a little bit of neighbor input to help guide this because that TUP for the Villa changed from 2010 until recently. There's a little more noise allowed in it. And that frustrates us that things like that are happening. We have no idea who allowed that. But they got it through. I would not look at the 2022 TUP and go, that's it. I would go back to 2010 and take a look. Thank you.
What was the decibel reading you got for your app or what are you reading?
I'll have to look on my computer.
I mean, just ballpark?
I take a lot of readings because I'm sick of getting told that it's not loud. So I'll be happy to look that up.
That's fine. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Andrea Bertolini and I am a Sierra Madre resident at 289 West Grandview. And I'm also an employee there and I am in charge of facilities. And oftentimes, at aft and time, the majority at all the weddings now. So I'm here to comment on a couple of things. We have mailed to the neighbor list 300-foot radius. It has gone out every time that we have a neighbor meeting. It is also copied to Vincent Gonzalez and various staff members. So every time they get notified or mailing goes out, the city does as well. We took the same list that this commissioner and the city mails out all of their postings to. We're using the same list as well. So if you're on that list within 300 feet, you are receiving a letter. In our comment on the gala, we have not had the gala on property for over five years. We used to have it annually. It was always outside. Approximately five, I think it could be closer to seven, but I know for at least five, it has not been on property. In our January neighborhood meeting, Ms. Fenara did tell the neighbors, notify them, that the gala was on site because we were celebrating what was to be our 60th year ga, annual gala that got canceled because of COVID. We let them know it was outside. We let them know, reminded them it was a school event. We would do everything in our power. They all have my cellphone. You all have my cellphone. It's attached to every email. So that was, they were notified of that. We did receive a call. I did speak to Ms. Stevens personally. I told her we were in the process of turning it down. The police did show up the first time. They saw it. We turned it down. They came back approximately half an hour to 45 minutes later. They, we turned it down again, even though our readings were reading within the city's decibel. It was still turned down. I told Ms. Stevens at the time, I'm sorry, the auctioneer is almost over. It's ending the live auction. We are here. We are going to work on it. I did answer her call. I know that it's not an immediate answer and it can't just be fixed right on the spot, but we are doing our best. After, and it's work in progress. But after we met with you as the commissioners and the monitoring events was being presented, we do have sound meters that we use. Our security company, which is a third-party security company, has to be there. They do take readings. They have to comment every time they're approached by a policeman. We have it. We can start submitting it weekly to the city or whoever we're directed to do so. So we can do that. Prior to this, the last few, I'd say a month and a half, it was all done by hand by the security guards. But now I have asked the company since January's meeting or. or prior to that, November, excuse me, that we need something digital and that was produced from them to be sent to us. So we are, um, it's, that's always a work in progress, too. I think that, is there any other questions regarding mailings or notifying or anything like that?
What is the acceptable decibel level that you say was it, though?
Um, the city, it goes by an eight-point-eight. So some decibel meter, sound meter, sound catcher, they do a point-zero-eight. The meter that we use, it has a scale. It shows the red when you shouldn't even be close to it. It shows medium noise and then low noise. And then you can even capture it and screenshot it, like, you know, the bounce of a loud, and then it comes down, so you can do that as well. Okay? Prior to the facilities, when I took over, um, there was an old kind of handheld one, kind of looked like a walkie-talkie, but they don't support that anymore, so we went to the, um, smart apps that were recommended.
Is it similar to what the neighbors are using?
I don't know what app they're using.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa Filo, six-seventy-two West Highland. I have a recording of that evening. It was at point-nine or nine-zero decibels. Have a listen. This is the auctioneer's voice. This recording was from my front yard. I live across the street from the Alverno Field, not even close to the villa. Again, sorry. Mr. Farthing was talking about that events were supporting the upkeep of the hundred-year-old villa, but yet, um, they have said prior to today's meeting and, uh, last month's commission meeting, that events were specifically to provide, uh, supplements to their tuition, and so they could provide more financial aid to students. So, um, as neighbors, when the stories change, that's when we start getting concerned. So, um, what I learned tonight was that there are twenty-three events coming up, and that's the whole point why we're coming forth, to take a look at the number of events, events that are happening at this, at the school. So, um, we feel that, uh, having four events per year is absolutely reasonable for Alverno, because we feel that the events are particularly to supplement their tuition and not to actually fix the villa. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not letting anybody talk twice, please. Thank you. I don't, I don't want to have...
It's twenty-nine events over a couple of years.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this? Okay. Good. We'll close the public meeting aspect, bring it back to the commission. I'm not sure where to go with this. I have so many unanswered questions myself, but anybody want to start?
Well, I, I can start. I, I mean, I think, first I want to just thank all of the representatives from Alverno and all the residents who live near Alverno for coming and, and talking to the commission, because I, I think it's really helpful. But I, I, I think fundamentally what we're talking about tonight is amendments to a temporary use permit ordinance that is not gonna apply to Alverno. And really, the fix for the Alverno issue has to come with the master plan and the CUP that, that is considered together, because re, really what Alverno is doing is not a temporary use, and, and we need to, um, you know, I, I don't want to stray too far off what we're talking about here, um, but, you know, i, if, if they're gonna do multiple programs, that, there's gonna have to be put in place, monitoring systems, reporting systems, those kind of things that don't really work for, you know, if somebody's having one party a year or, or one auction a year kind of thing, that, which is really what we're talking about tonight. So I, I think that, um, we should really push to have the CUP done by the time this is done. I mean, if, if staff needs to, you know, continue the existing TUP, annual TUP for a month or two, I, I understand that, because, you know, stuff takes time. But I, I don't think we should just live indefinitely on that annual TUP that Alverno has. That's, that's not the right answer. The right answer is to really look into what the issues are with, uh, Alverno and its neighbors and, and find a solution in the master plan and, and CUP. Bringing you back to this, I, I, I think this is a good first start. I, I don't think this, I, I, I fear that this isn't gonna solve all our problems, and we're gonna have to come back to this. And, and part of it has to do also with, you know, staff is gonna have to implement procedures and whatnot to make this work better, um, and, and those are gonna be a work in process. And, and so, you know, maybe we should think about August-ish of, uh, of twenty-twenty-three and, and say, let's revisit and see how this has worked and what we can improve. But I think this is a good first start. I, I think, I do think the concept of adding, uh, an additional finding in seventeen-eighty-eight oh-five-oh A, that there hasn't been any issues in the past, I would say, year, is, is a good one. And I, I'm not sure if on the event monitor, we want to change the code here, or we just want to discuss things of how staff could, uh, implement reporting procedures, um, but I do think we need to augment some of the reporting procedures and concepts. Um, I, I also think we talked about at the last meeting, having a list online of what the TUPs are, so people can see where they are and what the timing is of them, um, and, and maybe have the contact information for the, uh, event monitors. So I think maybe that's something we can handle, just with staff procedure, but, um, you know, those are my initial thoughts.
I, um, I think, based on hearing from the residents, that you may want to look at greater specificity as to what the report is from the monitor. And, you know, perhaps some of the residents will be willing to contribute items that they would like to have captured, because, um, apparently there is two sets of, or two interpretations of what was happening at, at these events, and they somehow don't overlap. I, unfortunately, I think that there's also a, a failure of goodwill at some point in time, and, and, um, you know, I don't think whatever we do here is gonna fix that. But I think, I think the, the report from the event monitor has, being as specific as possible, and, you know, when things happen, what I think will provide us with, uh, uh, at least a picture so that we under, we can understand what's going on, because we're hearing from the residents that, uh, you know, they have grave concerns, and we're hearing from Alverno that it's not a problem, and it, I think, you know, I, I, I'll, to, it's, it's annoying to come down here and talk to us. There's a lot of other things to do, and, and, and something has to rise to a certain level to commit somebody to come down and, and, and make statements. And we've heard a lot of people make a lot of statements over the years, and so it's not just a, I, I think it's not a statistical anomaly. I think there is something going on. And so however we can document that, uh, I think will be very helpful in, in resolving it.
Tom?
Um, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Hutt on the idea that this is not what's going to be in effect for Alverno. And with, with that in mind, I tend more to shy away from the idea of codifying any kind of reporting because of the fact that things change so quickly. And so if, who knows what technology is just on the cusp? And so having a codified form that doesn't keep up, I don't, I, I tend to agree that that should be more of a ministerial side than, uh, us codifying what that form is for TUPs, because I believe that the TUP process is not what will be the final process for Alverno.
Okay.
And I think that soliciting input from, from, uh, either people who are interested in that or the public is a great idea, because we can't possibly think of the things that go wrong at all these events. I think that we should extend the time to twenty-four months, though, rather than just one, because if I'm only gonna get slapped on the wrist, because I have the same party every year, and I move it back a week, now I'm in a clearer. So I think twenty-four months would be the timeline I would suggest if you're amenable to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Again, any thoughts?
Yes, I agree with, uh, John, Commissioner Hutt summed things up, and I appreciate the comments about specifying the report, but I kind of agree that that's more of an Al, probably an Alverno thing than a general temporary issue thing, temporary permit. So we'll probably have to address that issue more with the CUP, what they're actually reporting there. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I, the only thing I have to say about the, the thing I've heard recurrently over the years, because I was involved in the original, uh, master plan approval, was the neighbors complained about continuous noise. Um, one was dumpsters on Grandview, construction and things like that, that some of them were temporary, some of them, they were doing, you know, legitimate construction, especially in the field and some of the school, but it was the miscommunication or just differences of finger pointing. That's how I look at it, because when I hear stories tonight, I hear the very same thing, that they're saying one thing, they're saying something completely another, and, um, you know, without talking to the police and finding out, did you actually say to these people, it's none of your business? I mean, that kind of stuff, that's the kind of finger pointing I'm talking about. That needs, needs to be fleshed out, I think, specifically for Alverno. I think one of the problems with the villa, and I don't want to get too off track, because I think this applies completely to different neighborhoods, is that, is that that, that building and the way that architecture and just the, the way the school is laid out echoes exceedingly poorly, um, more so, because I've been to the carnival at Saint Rita's, and of course, that's during the day. And I guess the other part, part of the problem is all these other events are at night, which is the most, you know, disturbing and annoying. You can't go someplace during the day. It's not a, a, you know, like the carnival, which makes plenty of noise. So if those kind of things, like for Saint Rita's, would, would apply, it's gonna apply differently. And, um, the only thing I might say is we might want to make some provisions for nighttime events versus daytime events, at least for temporary use permits, but that's a completely separate issue from what's happening at Alverno. And, uh, you know, it just, it's sad. I, I, it's like Bob says, it's like you have other events in places that, all kinds of noise. We have neighbors across from, uh, um, you know, the, um, Heasley Field, neighbors who continually live there, all they, like, we couldn't even get them to agree on the, uh, the solar panels, because they were so, you know, complaining about the noise from softball and baseball, and then they didn't want their view blocked by solar panels and things like that, so, um, but we can't, you know, we, those kind of, those places are already there. I don't think you can ask them to leave, and I think there's gotta be some place to work out, work out with. The noise maker, you know, issues need to be really rectified, and I don't know how that parses into, to an agreement that we're gonna make with Alverno, but that needs to be completely separate. And I wish there would be a little bit better, uh, I don't know, honesty, I guess, between the two groups, you know, the people not only complaining, but also from the school to come, come clean with their, with some of the things that they may have done, what they brushed off the neighbors when people just get in their face. And I think that's half of what's happening. You, if you already go over to your neighbor's house pissed off, you're probably gonna, you know, depending on the person, you're not gonna get the most, uh, conciliatory, um, response from them. So I, and I think that's some of the problems, I think, that we're gonna face, and we'll talk about it with the, one of this, these discussion items that we can bring up. But, um, I don't think it should affect, you know, the general use from other neighbors. I mean, I have a neighbor that lives on the other street and has these really loud parties, and we call the police all the time, because they're really loud, and they're not, you know, TUP events, but they're quite frequent. They're a bunch of young people, and, uh, lady that lives right across the street wasn't well, and so we were calling on her behalf and a number of things like that. So you can have the same kind of animosity with neighbors, with one person who then gets singled out, and that gets heightened up and gets exacerbated. And then you sort of just, you, 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 you make, make a point of, every time anything happens, you're all, your nerves are already raw, and maybe that's what's happened the last ten years between, uh, Alverno and their neighbors, and I wish that would be rectified. But I don't think it should apply to other people in the city who just want to have special events. I think limiting it to four times per year is fine, but, um, I think some of these other things, I think you're right, John, we can, you know, work out over time, because, um, I think in some ways, it's gonna be a work in progress. Anyway, those are my comments.
So I guess my question is, were we hoping to get to a point where we had this ready to actually move to a reading, or do we need, are, are you gonna, do you recommend bringing it back with the revised language that we were contemplating adding from City Attorney to allow for consideration of past reports?
I was hoping that we can go ahead and make the modification as offered by City Attorney Geregosian and move this forward to City Council, so we can get this put in place.
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah.
Um, one, one question, um, just coming up with the chair said is, I assume that the noise ordinance has different, allowed noises at different times of the day, so that's already built into the noise ordinance, right?
Correct.
That's, that's correct.
The, the concept that, you know, when you have a temporary use, you have to comply with noise, is, is already gonna have some time differential in there. I, I don't know if we want to think about whether we need separate ones, or if we just rely on that, or we want to, like, see how this works and check it out next year. Um, I, I don't really feel like I know enough to know what the right answer on that is.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. I don't really know either. I think some of it's gonna be a work in progress, but I think we need to move forward on something to help out the general, uh, TUPs in the city without getting bogged down with some of the issues, even if it does apply to Alverno.
Okay. I guess it's motion time?
Well, do, does the City Attorney have language for finding six that we want to hear?
Subject to further refinement, um, I propose language that reads as follows. So temporary use findings, it says, may be approved pursuant to the provisions of this chapter only upon making the following finding. The applicant has not violated a condition of a prior permit within twenty-four-month period. And that would be finding number six.
One question I have about the, the concept of applicant, um, this goes to the, the, that and the frequency question, is, is the applicant just a person, or is it a location? Like, if you had a company with ten people in it, could you cycle through, you know, and have ten different applicants making, um, applications at that same location, and instead of having a limit of four, you've got forty, and then, oh, don't worry, I didn't, I didn't have any violations, you know, that was Fred. I, I just want to make sure we're not setting up loopholes that are really easy to drive.
It wouldn't be necessarily the applicant. It's, it's, the application is for that site.
Okay.
As long as it didn't sell the house, and then the new neighbor comes in, finds that they're...
Well, I mean, if it's entirely different owner, I, I suppose that sort of makes sense, but if it's, I just want to make sure that there's not an ability to game it.
Sure.
But if, if that's the way we read this, then I think the, the language works.
Right. Any other suggestions or additions?
No, we need to move ahead with something.
All right.
I move that we approve municipal code text amendment regarding chapter seventeen dot eight-eight, temporary use permits of Title seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code pursuant to resolution number twenty-two dash twelve, with the, uh, modification as suggested by City Attorney.
I'll second it.
Second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Would you like to take a break? We have two more discussion items, but I think we'll take a short, I'm gonna say five-minute break, and it'll probably be ten, so. We'll be back.
...five point three six photograph, photography and motion picture filming in Title V business licenses and regulations.
So we do have a staff presentation from Lauren Hines, administrative analyst, analyst from the Community Services Department. And she will not have a PowerPoint, but she will have an oral presentation. And just to preface, when Alverno, when we, when the Planning Commission was reviewing the Alverno master plan update, and we did hear about many of the issues that were raised tonight regarding temporary use permits and filming at the, at Alverno, the Planning Commission did direct staff to come back with discussion items for both those topics, the TUP and filming. So this is, we're bringing this to you as a discussion item, provide some input. City Attorney Gary Gosian drafted a proposed ordinance. It's not under the purview of the Planning Commission, but is under the purview of the Community Services Commission.
Very good.
And I would just like to add, any, any comments by the Planning Commission will be included in the agenda packet as a, as a public comment, as opposed to a recommendation by the Planning Commission?
To the Community Services Commission.
To, to the City Council. The, I believe the Community Services Commission has already considered this item. Is that correct?
We were met on Monday, yes.
So the, the draft that we have here is not just your suggestions, but it's already been reviewed by the Community Services Commission?
I, I believe that's something Ms. Hines will talk about.
Correct. Good evening Chair Pevsner, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. So I bring you this report based on the filming needs within the city of Sierra Madre. There have been many concerns brought to our attention from various locations throughout the city. So this is not just located or based on a particular location. So with that, the recommended changes that we are making are to change the rules for residential areas primarily and limit, which I will go into now. So limitations on filming in residential areas would then bring it to a maximum of 12 productions per year, per location. Each production may not exceed a maximum of 10 days per month, inclusive of preparation, film and strike days. The time between productions on a specific parcel of land must be at least 14 days. Filming will be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Applicants must comply with the municipal codes parking and noise regulations. Lighting shall be hooded and directed downward to reflect away from adjoining properties. And with this, residential approval will not be required, since we're trying to do it limited between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. So for non-residential areas, there will be no limit to the number of productions per location, per year. No limit on the length of a production. Approval of 51% of property owners within 250-foot parameter of each parcel for the filming between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. through 11:00 p.m. Approval of 75% of property owners within a 250-foot parameter of the parcel for filming between the hours of 7:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m., if it involves street closures. So again, if they're asking for a street closure in that area, we will require 75% for the same timeframe. If there's no street closure, we're still looking for the 51%. Now, the approval of property owners, it will not be required for filming that is occurring between the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Applicants must comply with the municipal codes parking and noise regulations, and again, lighting must be hooded and directed downwards to reflect away from adjoining properties. The amended ordinance clarifies that productions with the cast and crew of five individuals or less are exempt from this ordinance because, because staff determined that they do not impose the type of impacts on residents and businesses that other, I'm sorry, that our residents and businesses are concerned about. Charitable films and student films are still subject to this ordinance because they do impose a burden on the community and staff. However, due to their non-commercial nature, their permit fee is discounted. Lastly, the amended ordinance adds a cancellation policy, policy, codifies staff's application requirements and expands the grounds for revocation of the city film permit. So with that also, I would like to just let you know that we, so I did send everything into the California Film Commission, which I have included their notes for your review. They sent it back to me with a couple of questions. We were able to address the concerns they had and they approved, and they were all for these changes. I do want to make sure that I include that currently, given the circumstances with the unfortunate incident that involved forgeries, we are still currently asking for signature approval for the permit application. So I wanted to provide you documentation to show you how, what that will look like now. With this, the signature gather will have to certify that this is legitimate, that this is correct information. As well, we will be posting all the permits online for all of our residents to be able to see at any given time. So those are the things that we will be moving forward so that we can go ahead and, and help our residents make sure that their signatures are in fact theirs, and we can try to eliminate any other opportunities or chances for forgeries. The last thing I'd like to touch base on real quickly is I'd like to give a brief understanding of some of the fees that are attached to filming. There seems to be a few misunderstandings regarding that and how the fees work. So for filming, the first day is $1,000. Each additional day is $750. Out of those fees comes staff time. So the film monitor on site, his pay comes from those fees. We fi, we pay for fire, PD if required. If not, there is a permit fee. We do have our violation fees that I do believe has become problematic in terms of people are not understanding that those are violation restrictions. So the fee of $1,172 per vehicle would only apply if the production company violates the terms of the agreement and goes beyond their permitted time. So those fees were set in place for that reason, to try to discourage them for staying in longer. So those are not normal fees that get applied to every production. I just wanted to make sure that I, I addressed that. So that's what I have for you this evening.
Those fees are just to the city then, right?
Correct. And I do have a copy of the fee schedule if you're interested in seeing it.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So clarifying question.
Yes.
Did, did the Community Services Commission review this document? If so, did they make any changes and did they make a recommendation to the City Council?
No, not yet. They have not made a recommendation. They wanted to basically gather everybody's information from this evening, and then I'll take it back to them at the next meeting.
Any questions?
You said that the, the filming, I'm sure I don't know the name, the State Filming Commission reviewed this and they're okay with it?
Correct.
So these are typical restrictions that other cities would have?
Yes.
And, and these kind of, you know, I have no idea on, on the economics of the filming industry. These aren't gonna like, these aren't intended to like shut down filming altogether?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. But, so there, there are protections for the neighbors and whatnot, but they're not gonna be the type of thing that would just destroy the filming industry in town?
Correct.
And the, the concept of no approval for the overnight is because it's a commercial area and so we don't care?
Correct. Yes, correct. Since there's nobody there, they're not impacted during the evening time.
And, but I assume our noise ordinance for late at night is a very low level, right? Because people need to sleep, right?
I, I don't know what that level is. I can look it up, but...
But it's not, I mean, the issue is, it's not like our commercial areas are really big, right? So if, if they make a fair amount of ruckus, you know, there's...
Residents.
Residents are not too far away.
Well, if I'm reading this correctly, if we're just selecting randomly certain lots in town, Alverno would be considered a residential area?
I will have to let Alex answer that one. I'm sorry, he'll defer to Alex on that.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there very many places in town that wouldn't be considered a, I think I asked the question wrong. What were the areas that wouldn't be considered a residential zone?
Along Sierra Madre Boulevard. If this, if, I believe, I believe it's 75% of the adjacent properties is the standard. So if you have two businesses on, on your side, on your right and left, and you have a business in front of you, you're, you're gonna be in a, you're gonna be in a commercial zone as defined.
So it's basically just if you, if we shut down Sierra Madre Boulevard in the middle of the night to do whatever? Okay.
And, and I suppose parts of Mitchell and, probably, Mitchell and Linta would probably have a, a small portion that would fall into that as well. Or, I mean, I'm sorry, Baldwin.
And, and Montecito, because there's that industrial exit section. And if you get down far enough, you could have a perimeter that were, enough of the houses would be in that, in that proximal area.
You currently have a monitor at all film shoots?
Not all film shoots, but the larger ones that we do require an FSO, we will have a film monitor. Others that are smaller, less people, like the ones that will have like five people or less that we will no longer require, we did prior to that if they had a generator. But now, no. So not every single one does require personnel.
What, what's the, what's the line that says that there will be a monitor?
So generally, if there's going to be, the number of people is a primary factor. So anything that's considered 50 or more would definitely require a film monitor on all of them. Other than that, I would generally spot check myself if it's smaller than that.
So we had a discussion and you heard before about, you know, what is the role of the monitor, what will they do? What does the role of the monitor, what, how does the monitor function for film shoots?
So the role of the monitor is to make sure that the applicant does not violate the terms of the agreement that they have entered into with the city of Sierra Madre regarding filming. That they're not breaking the timeframes that they said that they would be here, that they're not bringing more equipment that they said that they would bring in, they're not encroaching on more land, things of that nature.
Is this monitor a third party again?
No.
So it's a district, a city employee?
Correct.
And, and do they have, and what, what authority do they have? Can they say, turn off the lights and go home or anything?
Yes, they can.
Really?
Yes, they can. They can always go, and we try to have them go and work with locations. If there is a concern, they will work it out with locations. If locations does not, is not able to make those changes happen, they don't comply, then they will be given a chance to correct it, or they do face the chance of having their permit revoked. It hasn't happened.
So tonight we were privileged to hear a lot of they did, they didn't, they did, they didn't kind of thing. Does, how does the monitor gather the facts of what happened while they were on duty?
That would be completely, that's dependent on what's going on, case by case. Right now, what we have done is, depending on the location, we have required a police officer to be there as well. So we have a firefighter generally, the film monitor and a police officer, and I require that the three of them go together so that they're all on the same page, so we understand what's going on. If we do have concerns, if it's on private property, you know, they can walk up, ask to speak with the film monitor. Film monitor will go out and speak to the person if, if they're able to do that. That's about, about it.
So one of the ongoing issues tonight that we've heard about is noise level.
Mm-hmm.
How, how is that, is that measured and recorded at any, or, I mean, is like, because we've heard, oh, no, is this level, no, is this level, and, you know, it's, one again, it's, you know, this.
Yes, correct.
And so is there, is there a way that the monitor can, you know, say, well, on, on the device that the city issued me, it said this, or whatever?
That is not something that currently, we, we don't have a device currently that we use, but that is something I would definitely consider finding to be a necessary piece of equipment to take into film, film shoots moving forward.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to understand, if there is filming anywhere, they get a filming permit and it's not a temporary use permit?
Correct.
Okay. So any location, any residential location can have 12 productions per year, a maximum of 10 days a month, 14 days in between. That's a total of 120 days a year?
Correct.
Possible?
Mm-hmm.
That's like, that's a third of a year.
Mm-hmm.
But this is inclusive of the preparation, filming and strike?
No, but it's still a lot. So we're, I don't think any of us have seen that happen. But what kind of recourse do the residents have if it did become something like that?
If it did become something like...
Suddenly, you know, one location is the spot for a very popular TV show airing weekly, and they, they're filming 120 days a year, and the residents are like starting to go nuts. What, what is the appeal process to something like this?
That actually I do not currently have an answer for, but I would be more than happy to research it and come back to you with, with an answer, unless Alex has an answer that I'm not able to give.
Well, if it's something that qualified for having to get neighbor permission, each one would be done uniquely, correct? They'd have to get a permit for each one of the 10-day filmings? So if they got tired of after the third one, they could just stop giving their approval to it?
Well, okay, to, to answer that, that, your question Commissioner Dallason, and I'll answer your question Commissioner Dennison. There's an appeal process currently in the code, and it says that if a, if a film permit is issued, an applicant can appeal that within 10 working days of the decision to the City Council at their next available meeting. So whatever, whatever is issued by Ms. Hines, are you the one that issues it, or, or is that the Community Services Manager that issues?
I am the one that issues the permit.
So if Ms. Hines were to issue a permit, it can be appealed directly to the City Council, so long as that, the, the written appeal is submitted within a 10-day period. And so to answer your question, Commissioner Dennison, you asked whether we can deny one if, if it starts becoming a problem because they're issued on a case-by-case basis. We, so Ms. Hines could only deny it if she's unable to make one of the findings, and the findings are laid out in the, in section, so it's five point three six point oh six oh, section B, and it says, "The conduct of such activity will not unduly interfere with traffic and pedestrian movement or endanger public safety. The conduct such, such activity will not unduly interfere with normal government or city operations." And the last one is, "At the determination, the city's public works department, as well as the Sierra Madre Police and Fire Department, that conditions such activity will not constitute a fire hazard." So assuming these conditions are met, then, then Ms. Hines would approve it. We, we don't currently have one in place that says that the, something to the effect of it's, it's not conducive to the neighborhood, or, they get 12, is the way it's written, and they'll, and they'll get 12 so long as they don't interfere with the government business, they don't interfere with public safety and traffic, and police or fire.
I thought that when she was describing up at the top, the, that there was a approval required of neighbors?
It, it, that's currently how it is, and in the residential neighborhood, it will no longer be the case that approval will be required of neighbors, and instead, what staff's proposing is putting limitations on the number of events that can take place and putting time limitations, because currently, a lot of the events in the neighborhood, in the residential neighborhoods, go beyond what staff's proposing here. So no more nighttime events, capped at an earlier time, and a set number of events in exchange, no residential approval, no, no approval by residents.
It, it seems like the, the concept that we added to the TUP of, you know, an ability to look back and see if there was violations in the past, should be added to this as well. The, the same concept that if, if, if we had problems with an applicant in the past or a certain number of complaints or whatnot, you know, we should be able to use that to ground stand on it. Because if somebody comes in, causes a problem, does their 10 days and leave, you know, they come back in again, they're just gonna do the same thing if we don't have the ability to say no based on that.
Yeah, we, we can definitely include that in, in the Planning Commission's comment, Planning Commissioners' comments to the Community Services Commission. One thing to clarify, the reason where we're, staff's proposing removing this residential requirement is, A, it's not that common in other cities to require, or to, yeah, to require residents approve filming in a neighborhood. B, we've had all these problems with forgeries, and we want to avoid that problem to the extent possible. And C, frankly, in some cases, it's been pretty extractive. Residents are requiring the production companies to pay them, I've heard something like up to $5,000 for getting their signature, and that's going to discourage filming in the city. So for those three reasons, city staff thought it might not be a good idea to keep the signature requirement in the residential area.
Has there always been a signature requirement?
To my knowledge, yes.
I've got a clarification question, so let's take the scenario that there's a TV series filming weekly, and they know they're gonna be filming weekly in one location, and it's gonna go on all year long. Do they get one permit, filming permit for that, or do they have to get one for every single week?
If I'm understanding the question properly, it is filming weekly. That will actually not be allowed. According to what the proposed changes are, it would be 10 days a month, period.
Okay, so twice a month, so they can film twice a month?
No, once a month. One production a month with a two-week window between, so that we only have one a month with 14 days between. So that they couldn't try to come in at the end of one month, film 10 days, and then roll into the next month with, for an additional 10 days, making it a total of 20. So we put the two-week period between that so that we don't over-stress and have somebody try to do a 20-day shoot.
They could film 10 days a month, 12 months?
Each month, correct.
And they know they're gonna do it for a year. Is that one permit?
No. It would be individual permits.
Okay. So there's an ability to appeal each month?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm just reading over the appeal procedures, and these seem to be the ability for the applicant to appeal. I, I don't see inability for the neighbors to appeal. And it, it also, it says, necessary to port applicant's position, and then, the notice of the appeal has to be mailed to all residents within a 250-foot radius. So, I mean, a neighbor doesn't have the capability to do that. It's just, i, i, if, I think if we're going to eliminate the, the, the voting, which has fraught with issues, having a neighbor appeal procedure is a, is a good substitute. And so I think we need to think about revising this appeal procedure so that neighbors can appeal as well.
And, and currently, they appeal to the City Council, or do they appeal to you?
If neighbors have a problem with it, they would contact, they would contact city, they'd contact myself or other city entities.
But this appeal procedure, the official appeal procedure is to the City Council?
To the City Council.
The official, yes.
Which meets every two weeks. So, I mean, is it put on hold pending the, the City Council's discussion?
That I don't have an answer to. This is a scenario that actually hasn't occurred, so I don't have an answer even based on experience.
Yeah, unfortunately, based on the conversations that we've heard in this room in the past, it, it's something that could happen.
And, and if the situation did arise, I, I would advise that the permit not be issued until the City Council has an opportunity to make a determination.
How early do filming companies typically apply for a permit? So if, if they're gonna do, you know, next month, do they do it a month ahead, two days ahead, or what, what's the typical timeline?
So it, again, it varies case by case, depending on the scope of work that they want to do. Right now, the way that it states, if it's without special effects, stunts, no street closure, nothing of that kind, within the hours 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., fairly simple, then it is a seven-day, business day turnaround process.
Well, if, I mean, if, if they need to do it seven days ahead, but the appeal period is 10 working days, it sort, that, that sort of doesn't jive. And, but then you have the, the issue that, that you were getting at, I think, Bob, that if, if there's a vindictive neighbor who just wants to thwart this, if somebody comes in, you know, doesn't, gets a permit, then you appeal, and it's gonna take a month due to the appeal, likely what's gonna happen is the filming company's just gonna go, oh yeah, I'm gonna go somewhere else.
There, there is a cost for the appeal, so it's not, it's not free to the neighbor or anyone who's going to, to file that appeal. So to the extent someone wants to do that for every single project that comes in the city, it's gonna be quite costly for them. There's that, there's that deterrent.
Yeah.
I don't know, you may want to fine-tune your appeal process so that it's, it may be a two-step process, and the second, second step is to the City Council, and there's somebody who can make a decision inside that, the window, I don't know. Because it sounds like the, the scheduling of the City Council meetings and the appeal process and whatever could, could pull this out for, for a while.
There, you could have an administrative process where the Community Services Manager hears the appeal. You could also have a scenario where the Community Services Commission hears the appeal, but they don't, they meet less frequently than the City Council, so that wouldn't address the issue.
But I mean, the, the other thing you could do is just have an ability for people to, before the, before the permit is even issued, especially if you're posting applica, are you gonna post the applications online or just the permits?
It will be the full thing, the full application with all the information in it.
So, I mean, if, if, if the application is timely posted on the city's website, you know, and there's an impacted neighbor, if, if the posting of that application says who they can talk to, whether it's you or the...
Correct.
Other staff, you know, then they could raise concerns even before it's issued and say, hey, look, I don't think they made this finding because of X, Y or Z. I mean, that, that's something I think that maybe neighbors could have input without having to go through a really convoluted or costly appeal procedure, but also doesn't give them, if they're vengeful, an avenue to just needlessly delay permits.
How would the neighbors know to look, see if there's something filming in the neighborhood?
Well, I mean, in the event of Alverno, they are supposed to send out a calendar that shows their activity, you know, months in advance, but unless you check the website, you wouldn't know which one is current and which one is...
I, I do want to add that we would make sure that the, that the neighbors are still notified prior to, so that they will have the information, dates, times, proposed activity, so they're not flying blind. Because no, that wouldn't be fair. Wouldn't be fair to just have a production company show up on site with no notice. And obviously, that has been an issue, and we're trying to remedy that issue, so they would still receive a notice.
So what's the relationship between the notice and, the application and the notice?
Once the application is received, the, currently, the production company is then supposed to send out a representative to canvas the neighborhood, give them the notice informing of what will take place, dates, times, contact personnel. They gather the signatures and then they submit it. I receive those before we issue the permits.
So it, it precedes the, the, the...
It does.
Granting of the permit?
Yes.
So they have a chance to reach out to you and say, timeout?
Yes. What I could do is, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I would think perhaps maybe an easier solution would be part of the application process is to have a prepared notice ready, so when I receive the application in hand, I can also receive the notice, review it, have them deliver it at the same time, which will buy us more time.
Yeah, and then, that's a prescribed form of notice? Like, it's always the same?
It, it's on the company letterhead. It's company letterhead, but it's standard language with dates, times, contact information, proposed activity.
Could we also include the city website that has the, the actual applications, so somebody could, you know, go through and then get all the information they want?
That will actually be yes. That's posted online currently, and are, are you speaking specifically with the notices that go out to the neighbors?
Yeah, if they have a notice that says, if you want more information, here's the city's website with all the filming information.
That I can have them add.
Yeah.
What, what is the verification process for making sure the neighbors get these notices?
So the way that it is supposed to work, which unfortunately, as we've recently discovered, was not at all in fact what was happening. But they do have a third party, most of the companies have a third-party representative who is supposed to go to the homes, issue the notices, gather the signatures, and then they turn in the signatures. Unfortunately, because I am one person and I don't know everybody's signatures in town, I'm, it, I did not know that these were forgeries. And it was a, an oversight that should not have happened, and that is why we're trying to rectify it now.
But I still don't understand, if they're notifying, I've heard the number like 300 residents?
250 feet of the, of the location.
That's like 300 residents. How do we know these people have gotten a notification?
Well, generally, it comes back when we get the signatures. I do see like the addresses, so that was the verification that we had.
But we're not going to get signatures with this new thing. What would be the method for verifying that?
How will I know that they did in fact deliver the notices? So recently, when some things were brought to my attention, I was asking for photo verification so that I could see that notices were being delivered. I'm still fine-tuning some of the, the ways that we can do it, recommendations, I'm open to taking them, and still trying to fine-tune the best way to do this.
It's like Amazon picture of them receiving a note.
Yes.
And I, I assume notice can also be provided the same way the Planning Department provides notice to people within 300-foot radius of entitlement. How, how, how does the Planning Department do it, Director Gonzalez?
We have a postcard that we mail...
We have a postcard that we mail out with a brief description and application of the project.
But if you're, I mean, the issue here, these seem to be, you know, much more time-sensitive, right? So, if you're talking seven or 10 days before it's going to happen, you get the list, which, they're going to have to go to, you know, they're going to have to go to some service to get, that's a couple of days, then they mail it, that's another couple of days. So, people are going to get this thing maybe a day or two before. So, I think the mail isn't all that great of a...
Not even a day or two. It appears as if the simple approval process is five days, seven days if it has street closures of three, or traffic controls of three minutes or less, and 10 days if there's full street closures.
Yes. So, yes, currently, right now, for full street closures, special effects, stunts, anything of that nature, does require more time.
Yeah.
So, five days...
But as little as five days.
As little as five days.
Yeah, so if it's five days, the mail's going to get there after.
Right.
Ms. Hines, why, why is it five days? If you could, if you could provide us with some more information as to why they have to do it, why we, why we approve it in five days, could it, could it take a longer period of time? Could we require more than five days, more than 10 days?
So, this was actually something that was put into place before I came in, and my understanding of that was for the reason that a lot of companies, for example, commercial shoots, they don't have a lot of leeway time before they come out. They usually know within a week, two weeks, they start picking locations, they contact me, and I've had them ask, "Can we pull a permit in a day or two?" No. So, it is the quick nature of the business. They pick dates, they run quickly, and that's why the dates are as short as they are, the timeframe.
So, this is a question for staff. What percentage of the residents do, does the city have email contacts for? Because a lot of the billing goes through emails.
I don't know, but I don't, I wouldn't expect it would be too many of them, although we don't, so could potentially be dealing with businesses, you're dealing with occupant or owner, that type of challenges.
Yeah, I also don't know if, if somebody's authorized the city to use emailed for their water bill, whether that's...
Right.
They can use it for other purposes.
It's a separate entity.
I mean, one, one thing we could do is, is develop sort of an email inventory that says people can sign up to get just email notices of every film permit if they want. If you just do it e-blast, that wouldn't be hard. Because, I mean, if, if you, if you live somewhere where this is an issue, right, you're going to know to be more vigilant. I think if you live somewhere where this doesn't happen, and there's one bad experience, you know, maybe you just write that off. But it's, I, I feel for the people who live somewhere where they have repeated incidents, and it's sort of 120 days that you were getting at. And so, if you were one of those people, I think it would be great to be able to sign up on some list that says you get a notice every time. I mean, it would only really even have to have the link to the website, say, "A new application has been submitted."
Yeah.
And then you can go look and figure it out if you want to complain or review or whatnot.
I think that's an excellent idea, because that's a poll, the information you want, and you're not bothering people that don't want it, and so...
So, that would be, in addition to the delivery of the notice, there would also be e-blasts from the city to the people who have registered their interest in knowing when there's a film shoot. And some of them may overlap, but some of them may not.
Yeah.
I had a question about the California Film Commission comments. Was this ever resolved? He had some questions about the parking and no, does, it says, "There's a law for posting of no parking signs." Is that, I guess what he's getting at, is that sufficient? Is that, was, was that addressed?
Yes, we were able to address all his concerns.
Okay, I just, I just see the question, I don't see the answer. Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question, I don't know if this is the Film Commissioner or City Attorney, but what is the interaction between this rule, this particular code, and Alverno's filming? If we do a CUP, do we have to defer to this? Can we do additional regulations, or can we make our own rules entirely?
So, staff, unlike the temporary use permit, staff intended for the film permit ordinance to apply to Alverno. But the CUP can include separate conditions for the film permit, if that's the route that the planning commission would want to take. If that is the route, though, I would, I'd prefer if we got city council direction on that, because I want to confirm that the city council is, because the film permits haven't been included in the conditional use permits before, I want to make sure that the city council is okay with considering film permits and temporary use permits in the conditional use permit.
Well, one concern I have is that we just had a public hearing about temporary use permits that don't really even apply to Alverno, and a lot of people came. I want to make sure we're not doing this film thing, like, and nobody realizes it's about Alverno, and, because we said, "We're going to deal with Alverno with the CUP, don't worry." And then we come to the CUP, and we have to tell people, "Oh, too bad, the filming is the really big issue, but we can't touch that, because we processed this other amendment a couple of months ago." That would be a disaster. So, if, if this is really meant to apply to Alverno, we need to let everybody know, so that they can make appropriate comments.
And consistency between the two would be probably helpful, so that there's one way of, of handling a permit for, for filming? So that, you know, that there is, there's certain procedures that are uniform?
So, when you, when you say consistency between the two, what, what's the other one? If we're talking about the film permit here, what's the other?
The TUP that we talked about earlier?
So, you're saying that the TUPs and the, and the film permit should be processed the same way?
Well, that, that, okay, that, that there's a monitor, and the monitor will do the following things, and that, you know, these are the consistent behaviors that the city that will step up to do when people want to modify the use of their land and their neighbors' happiness.
Yeah. I was going to say, I don't think it's consistency necessarily in the application, because the people that are applying for a TUP and a film permit are different peoples. It's more consistency in, in the way that affected neighbors can interact and, and say, because, I mean, if, if you think, "Oh, this thing is coming, I've got to go, I want to register my concerns," and it's an entirely different process, that, I think that's going to confuse people, because I don't think they look at TUP, film permit, I've got these rules and these rules. It should just be something where you can go find the right people to talk to.
I don't think the public sees the difference. They just know that, that the city granted a permit, and they're having a, you know, street fair, or a film, or something, and so, what do, what can I do about it? How do I express my concerns?
And, and I think that's the intention behind the city council, planning commission, and staff, all wanting to look at this holistically. That's why we've brought the film permit and the TUP out together, so we can address the issue, I think, holistically, to make sure that the, the residents' concerns are addressed in their entirety.
And, and when someone explains, when, when staff has to explain to someone coming to the counter about, "What, tell me what's going to happen, you know, when they set up the, you know, booth on my street, or, or the film production." Well, there'll be a monitor there, the, the monitor will do the following things, whatever, and that part is consistent, so that they say, "Okay, that's going to be observed, and someone, a third party will gather information, so we make sure that everything is done according to the, you know, our expectations."
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. What, what was the driving factor to go from a crew of two, to a cast and crew of 15 as the threshold for requiring a permit? Because there's an exemption, as I read it now, you don't need a film permit if there's a cast and crew of 15 persons or less.
They, it's very rare that that happens, and generally, when they come in, it's for maybe just a couple, maybe an hour, two hours. Those are far more rare. And they generally come in, and they're, a lot, a lot of the times, they're high school kids or somebody like that, trying to get some experience. Now, when we enter into more of the college-age kids that are doing larger-scale production companies, that's where they do fill out the application, because they come in with a larger body of people. So, it's not, it doesn't take as much time, it's...
Ms. Hines, is that a, is that a typo? Isn't that supposed to be five? 536.050C, I believe, is what Commissioner Dennison is referencing. Because in the exception section further up, we say five persons or less.
Yeah, and also, in the definition, film or photography activity is five.
Five. I, I think that's intended to be five, not 15, am I right?
Then...
That might be a typo.
Yes.
That seemed out of line, and I didn't dive overly deep in this, because it's not something we actually have purview on, but it looked like there were a lot of definitions that were numbers-based, that didn't tick and tie, so...
Noted.
Thank you. I think at this juncture, since we're almost filling into the comments, I'm going to open it up for public comments, so we can get, and then if we need you...
Thank you.
...for assistance, I appreciate it. So, anybody in the crowd, it's time to come up and speak.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to make it quick. My name is Janice Savoy. I live at 713 West Montecito. My comments are actually going to be different than what I expected to make, because I am absolutely stunned that the city is recommending getting rid of the resident signature requirement. You got caught doing something wrong, and so, "Oh, we can't do that now." That doesn't really work for us as residents. We want you to help protect us, and I don't think you protected people in that sense. I was originally going to come in to say, I was hoping that we could expand the zone that would require permitting to include the parts of production that are not actually the filming site, but that are the parking lot, the porta-potties, the shuttle van sites. Those aren't included right now in the way I understand the permitting process, and that is an impact to traffic and safety in the neighborhood as well. And I live on Montecito, so the church sometimes gets used as a staging area, and I've never had a say in that, in this, the old permit process, where I could have signed off. Now, I won't get a say at all, because in the new process, I don't get a say, but it seems that that should be part of the consideration. Any place where they stage filming, put vehicles, park people, that should be all in consideration of the permit process. And I don't know that it is now, and maybe I can be corrected, but I don't think it is. So, I'm just, as a citizen, I'm really, really concerned that you're getting rid of it. I understand that other cities don't do it, we don't have to do what other cities do. And to have us now being told, "Okay, you have to check the website, you have to see where the filming is, and then you have to go down and, and do a process." They are getting rewarded for their forgeries. The film industry did this. They're getting rewarded for doing the wrong thing. I don't think that's what Sierra Madre stood for. That makes me sad. But I would like to know, maybe you could answer that, Ms. Hines, do we include the areas of staging as part of our process? I don't know the answer to that, I did think we did, but I would like to know the answer to that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Can I ask you a question before you respond?
Absolutely.
So, since you have experience of what's going on in Montecito...
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there anything you saw that you would have objected to?
Yes.
Consider a violation?
Smelling porta-potties, that felt like that was a, I wouldn't say it was a safety shoot, but that's a health concern. Numerous vehicles going in and out of the parking lot, and there is a preschool in that area, so there are a lot of little children in that parking lot. I feel that's a safety concern. And a lot of crew walking up and down Michelinda with materials and cords and things like that, that were kind of impeding the ability to turn on and off the street at times. So, yeah, I would consider those all issues that we need to look at.
Did you see any hazards that related to the school? I mean, did the church not have adequate safety, or...
I did not see them, there was no coning off of the lot to verify, "Okay, keep the filming people here, so the kids can enter safely here." No, none of that was in place. And that would have been a very fair thing to ask for.
Okay.
So, things like that, I don't think are being considered in this process. And of course, the noise level, being the neighbor living right across the street, with all of the trucks and the diesels going on and off. So, that's also an issue. So, maybe she can answer those questions for us. Thank you.
So, currently, the way that it works is, we do require signatures for those that are affected within 250 feet of the parcel of land that the filming activity is to take place on. So, parking, parking will, if it's in a city lot, then I will include that on notices that will go out. They make arrangements with the church, that's between the production company and the church. I don't get involved when it comes to that kind of stuff. They set the rules. If they want to have, if they want to impose certain safety restrictions on them as far as coming in and out of the parking lot, coning it off, that would be between the private party and the production company.
But they still need to be noticed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Lisa Palaio, 672 West Highland, and I'm absolutely shocked, because I blew the whistle on my name being forged, and then you're pulling the signature process. And I think that the neighbors need the opportunity to see this, these changes to the code and come and speak before this is voted on. This is absolutely shock, shocking to me. We have absolutely no control, and we can automatically assume that Alverno will be filming for 120 days. So, I, I'm absolutely shocked that you're taking whatever little power that we had, that you already took from us by forging our signatures, and you're taking it further by saying you don't even need our signatures. So, we definitely need an opportunity to speak out. You talked about a monitor who works for the city, who's going to be in their office from nine to five, and the production companies definitely work from seven to 11. So, how are you going to monitor the behavior of the production crew from the end of the workday of your city employee till 11:00 p.m.? And we get the number of the production crew to call, but they don't answer the phone. And usually, the production folks aren't on-site, and the person who manages the, the production company isn't on-site, and they absolutely leave by 5:00 o'clock p.m. And they certainly know our names and won't listen to us. So, thank you.
Cynthia Swanka, 239 Wilson. I had no idea that the signature sheet was going to be removed. That does seem outrageous to me, and I'm shocked by that as well. I don't know, it seemed like because there was this one issue, that this is the answer to that? At least, that's how it sounded to me. I don't know, but, yeah, I think neighbors need more input on, on removing signature approval. Thank you.
I'll agree with the previous speakers, that to, to take the signature away is shocking, but as a way to notify people of filming, I would suggest a yard sign, just like when you get a building permit to do construction, you have a big sign saying, "This is the permit, this is what's being done," at least in Pasadena, maybe not in Sierra Madre. But I think if people are driving down the street, and you see a sign that says, "Filming coming," they'll stop and take notice, whereas the, the legalese postcard that comes in the mail is easy to, to forget about. And also, just the, the number of days that you're talking about for filming is absurd, and again, getting out of the purview of what this committee's doing, but I think for Alverno, I mean, they should be limited to, to 10 days a month for any and all events, school, weddings, filming, and everything, because as the person living across the street, I think I'm entitled to a few days of my own peace, but if the, the city has said that they have never been turned down for a temporary use permit for a party, so that's unlimited, and now we have movies going for, you know, the 10 or whatever days we just set a month. It's, we're going backwards here. We're, we're wanting more control, less events, more silence, and it's just very disappointing here. Thank you.
Chiwi Chow, 1145 North Michelinda, and I have to echo what the previous speakers have mentioned. I am shocked and very disappointed to hear... I am shocked and very disappointed to hear that possibly I'm going to have to endure a hundred and twenty days out of the year of that film noise and nuisance. Let me just explain, with each, with each filming day, this is what I put up with because I'm right across the street from Alverno. In the morning, when I'm leaving for work at six thirty, I could come out and there might be five pickup trucks with guys. They're all milling about, six thirty, six A.M. But prior to that, I would have been awoken by the slamming of doors because they're all gathering there. They're waiting for the Alverno gates to open. And then it's intimidating for me to leave my home for work with all these strangers around. Okay, but I've dealt with that. All right, I've, I rarely call, I actually, I haven't called the police for probably years, and I, and Andrea can tell you, she never hears from me. I am not that vindictive, hostile neighbor. Ken Farsing will tell you, I'm always very pleasant at the meetings. Okay, I'm, because I truly want a resolution. Okay, I feel that we have been asked to endure way more than we should. Okay, in regards to the filming, it's not right that at ten P.M., eleven P.M., my husband is so upset with the huge truck right in front of our house. That's not right. Is that right to you? Would you like that so many times a year? You know, and I appreciate this talk about having a monitor. I think we've had situations like that where Alverno has promised to have someone on site. But understand that every time there's a film shoot, we are impacted. Okay? My, my evening could be ruined because there have been many times when I've fallen asleep, and then I hear noise. I go, oh, it's the film crew. Okay? Or when they're wrapping up, every time a vehicle exits that Alverno lot, I hear the scraping. It happened last week. I'm not sure what the event was, but I didn't call, but I, but I was asleep. And this, and I went to the door several times. What's going on out there? Oh, there's some vehicles exiting from Alverno. But this is my life. This is, this is my neighbors' lives. Okay, so maybe you might have a film production, a film shoot, and they're not abiding by the policies set in place. Okay, well, they come and go. Well, the next film crew, they're going to do the same thing. And we're going to be impacted again and again and again. So I'm just asking for some peace. Okay, a hundred and twenty days? That, that is way too much to ask of the neighbors. Would you agree to that? Would you? For yourself, a hundred days out of the year? And I think for Alverno, there should be an exception, you know, in regards to filming. How about four, four film shoots a year? I know that's not very popular, but how many days am I entitled to, to live a peaceful life, to have a quality of life? Okay, how many evenings does my family time have to be impacted? You know, I, I may not call the police, I may not call Andrea, because I don't want to be further stressed. I'm already stressed out. Okay, I, I'm already stressed out hearing that auctioneer, hearing the music, hearing the movie tracks. I'm already stressed.
Can you sum up, please?
Okay, okay, so please, please try to look at it from our perspective. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. We've provided a letter for the Commission. I'm going to refer to the letter because there's some charts in there that provide information on filming at Alverno. So I think it's helpful. Hopefully you have it. It's dated today. If you don't, I can get you a copy of it. Does everyone have that, this letter?
No.
We've got it electronically.
Oh, you received it electronically?
Yeah, they don't have it here.
Yes, some people don't have their laptops.
I got it, but which one is it above?
I do want to clarify for the record that Alverno was not involved in the recent issue with the neighbor's signature gathering. As Lauren's indicated, the production companies are responsible for contacting the neighbors and securing filming approvals. So Alverno basically assumes that when the city issues a film permit, that everything's in order. I mean, we basically work with the film companies. They say, is your campus available? We say yes or no. If it is, they then go to the city and start the permit process. The only thing we know is we get a permit back, and again, we just assume that everything's been taken care of. And signature verification is critical. When you look at, when I'll go through the stats on Alverno, we've been following the signature gathering process that the city's had in place for, you know, at least fifteen, twenty years. All the filming that's been done at Alverno, if it's a small commercial shoot that's maybe a day in length to a feature film, that, you know, maybe twenty days, all of that has gone through the signatures where basically the film companies circulate to the neighbors and talk with them. We're not opposed to that. That, this isn't, this is not our ordinance. This is really a staff proposal. So I think you'll find it unusual that we actually agree with the neighbors, that the signature process for us has worked. Because if the neighbors don't want the film, that's great. They'll let us know. So I think you know, Alverno's really been the site of filming since nineteen sixty-eight, and we've had dozens of feature films, a lot of commercials, television series, streaming series, and then there's also like fashion shoots. And, you know, we believe there's economic and cultural benefit to the city, the school, and also the region from filming. Now, in the letter, I've discussed some statistics from the LA Economic Development Commission, and they basically report on the amount of economic activity from filming. And, you know, nine percent of the region's jobs are in the entertainment sector. And if you look at SCAG reports from twenty twenty, there's four hundred and twenty-eight Sierra Madre residents directly employed in this sector, and that's over eight percent of your total city workforce. Now, you know, filming is an important source of revenue, funding for not only the school, but also for critical city services, and it's a source of employment for your city staff. The city and the school receive revenues from filming, obviously, and the production supports local businesses. Like, if you look at your budget, the one that's online, I didn't call and dig into it, but basically license and permit revenues constitute over twenty-five percent of city revenues. It's almost a million dollars. It's projected at nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand this fiscal year, and that includes film licenses and permits. And I'm glad that Lauren shared with you your fee schedule and the fee schedule that's online for filming. Now, just for comparison purposes, your city library budget is six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Now, filming is cyclical and it's variable, and the school uses the revenues for funding improvement projects like beautification on Michelinda with our Pilaster project, pathways and landscaping on Grand View, the multipurpose field and other projects. We also use the revenues to supplant the no-fee or basically the free use of our facilities for the city. Now, we believe the ordinance is going to limit citywide filming, and filming does not occur on a monthly basis where you could equate one film per month to twelve films annually. I don't think in any situation Alverno would have a hundred and twenty days of filming on the campus. So, you know, let's just get that off, you know, basically onto the table now. Is that if you had the ordinance as it is now, we don't believe we'd get a hundred and twenty days of filming. We probably wouldn't want that amount of filming. Again, if you had the neighbor process where they are surveyed, obviously, they would be concerned about, I, you know, I understand the Commissioner's concern about overuse, so a hundred and twenty days is just not, to us, doesn't seem reasonable. Now, this ten-day production limit, when we really looked at it, and if you basically take a look at our letter on page, you'll refer to it. On page three, we've done a six-year, seven-year survey of filming at Alverno. And you can see the number of productions. We had a low, obviously during the pandemic, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty of two productions on the campus the entire year. Twenty eighteen was a significant year. There were ten productions. And, you know, in other years, there's been five, eight, seven productions. So those don't total a hundred and twenty days. There's no need for a hundred and twenty days of filming. We've also broken down the preparation days, the film days, and also what they call the strike, which is taking the, everything away, the strike days. And you can basically see those, this is cumulative. So let's take twenty sixteen. We had five productions on the campus. There were ten days of prep for all five of those. So in some cases, the prep may have been one day. For one production, maybe it was three days. The filming was, there were twelve days of filming. Filming's very expensive for these companies, so they basically don't want to be in there with those crews for a very long time. So the five productions, there were twelve basically film days. That's maybe two days of filming per production. And then the strikes, basically, there were four strike days. Now, we do get smaller shoots. Again, we have fashion shoots, and we have commercials that come in for just a day. One of the things we also looked at was multiple productions per month. You can see at the bottom of page three, and the chart goes over to page four, is that basically in the survey, what we found is that within these seven years that we surveyed, there were eighteen months that had two productions per month, and there was one that had three productions basically in a month. And you can see that the different months that they occur, and they're pretty random because of the fact that filming is very variable. So one, again, one of the concerns, in the letter, we basically have some concerns about the ordinance. Again, we, we're, it's not, we haven't come here asking you to basically waive the requirement, put us in a residential zone, and, you know, basically say that the neighbors can't, basically aren't, don't have access to the, you know, to the petition. They've got to go to, you know, some process to figure out if a movie's happening or not. I've been sitting here listening to the dialogue, and they're, they're very good questions the Commission is raising. I think you want it to be transparent to the residents what's happening, and we, we feel we've been transparent. I appreciate Commissioner Spears indicating that we send a calendar out. We mail a calendar out to our neighbors of the quarterly events at the campus. Not only everything that's happening at the school, but if we have filming that's set up.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, if I could just take a second just to conclude, or if you had a question.
Yeah, do, but go ahead.
Okay. So I think what, if you're going to stay with this formula where you basically allow the type of films that occur basically without resident notification, our recommendation would be that if you have, in, like Alverno's case, if someone wanted to do two film productions, and maybe they're small shoots, they basically have to go through neighbor notification. We're not opposed to that. We, we do that. We've been doing that now for fifteen or twenty years. So anyway, we think you really need to carefully think about the impacts of the ordinance that you're proposing, not only on the neighbors, but also on, you know, with reality, taking a look at reality in terms of the filming at Alverno.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Is any, because we've had the forgery thing brought up. Has any process for the signatures ever denied a production?
That I'm not aware of. You'd have to ask Lauren about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, there, there are ways to do signature verification, using vendors to do it. You know, basically, I think the problem is with this production company, obviously, there was a dishonest actor. Paramount Studios, from what we understand, contracted with someone to do signature gathering, and then they contracted with someone else, and they sat in their car or whatever and basically filled out the surveys as if they had circulated them. Obviously, that's an issue. The school doesn't want to see that happen, and that's a terrible situation for the neighbors to have that happen.
I have a question. You, you referenced the calendar, the quarterly calendar?
Yeah, we mail out quarterly.
So.
Yeah, Andrea can clarify that, too, because I think we do notifications.
My question is about how current it is, so that, does the, I mean, you, you mail it to the neighbors, correct?
Yeah, I think it's also, is it on our website? We'll have Andrea come up.
And does it show the, all the filming dates, and if it's a quarterly calendar, how do we keep it accurate so that they know when someone has applied or when you've led a contract to, to, for a wedding or a, you know, a photography event or something else? I mean, do you go back and reissue the calendar when it's updated?
So what, and thankfully, Ken has been here for a long time for Alverno, because way before, after I graduated, but way longer than I've been working there for seventeen years. But Ken actually is referring to the quarterly mailing that was put in place prior to me taking over for facilities, and that's how it was done, in a meeting with the neighbors. And I have stated that in a different date, and I'd have to. It was in January. It was right after the field was being built. The neighbors came, we talked about that, and they said, we don't need a quarterly meeting, and we don't need a quarterly mailing. We went to email. We collected emails at that meeting. I have that date and time when they all signed in and who gave me emails. If other people have requested to be put on that email, then I include it, and the city officials and staff and police all get it.
So the question is about the accuracy of the calendars?
The calendar gets mailed out by email, and it is all of our school events and all of our rented events and any of our after-hours, five P.M. and weekends for the villa. It says, and all the cities or officials are copied on it, it says the date, the timeframe, and where it's taking place on campus. Filming has never been added to the calendar because, as Lauren Highs presented, it is, when it comes, it's fast and furious. That's when it comes. We rely on the permitting of what's taking place in the city. We follow all of the guidelines that the city is asking. Therefore, that's what we've done. If the, you know, if the suggestion is that when we know it, we just email it out as soon as we know, then that is something we can do, but that is not what's being done with filming.
So, so currently, what you're saying is on that calendar that you're publishing to your neighbors for them to know what's going on, the filming is not listed?
Filming's not listed.
Are, I mean, but we have heard already from Alverno that they, that they have committed to events that go into twenty twenty-four. Are, are those events listed on this calendar?
We, sometimes the calendar goes out two and a half, three months. Right now, because the neighbors, the last two concerns I got about last neighbor, it was too far in advance. So I literally am doing like a four- to five-week calendar, which the city officials have already received. I believe it was on Tuesday or Wednesday. So the neighbors all had it up to last week's events, and now they have the, into May.
So I'm, I'm not sure I heard that the, the answer is that you, you've told us that you, you have events that you've already calendared for up to twenty twenty-four, six events, some of them which are religious in nature, as I remember.
Ken Farsing.
Now, are those on the calendar that you're notifying your neighbors about?
No, because it's in the future, and we're focusing on the immediate of the neighbors' concerns of, I want to know when your graduation is. I want to know the Easter break. I want to know those things. They want to know absolutely the weekend events and nighttime events, so.
But you're aware of them.
I'm aware of what? All of the events?
The events.
I'm aware of all the calendars.
But you don't put them on the calendar?
It's not been asked, nor it hasn't even been addressed in a neighborhood calendar meeting. I'm not opposed to it.
It's too far out.
But things change and things add, and that is, I mean.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand whether the neighbors receive an accurate calendar of coming events so that they are aware. If there's something going on at the high school, they look it up and said, oh, yeah, that's the.
As accurate as I can make it at the time that I send it, and yes. So all the weddings, they would know. No wedding comes up within a month. A memorial mass could come up, a school event could be added. And when this neighborhood calendar came about, and it was before me, it wasn't about school events. It was just about the villa use and nighttime purposes.
I mean, that's accurate. We met, when we met with the neighbors quarterly, they asked that we not just include the villa events, but we also include the school events, which we agreed to. We think it's fine to be transparent, and we want them to know when graduation is and those type of things. So in the T U P basically had us just list the villa events that were, you know, the rental special events. So that's what we started to do, and then the neighbors asked us to expand it, which we did.
Yeah, I, I think being as transparent on all events would be helpful for the neighbors to know what's going on.
Again.
Whether, whether or without the, the signature stuff, you know, that, that, once you, once you know that, hey, by the way, for ten days next month, we're going to be shooting, that that, you know, that shows up on the calendar. I'm sure you put it on the calendar for school, yeah?
As with Lauren, I would love to know when the filming is going to happen. I don't, they literally, they could scout two years in advance. You never hear from them again, and all of a sudden, they call, are your dates available? You say yes or no. You tell them what is. Next thing they know, they go to the city. We get notified they've been granted permission. It's literally that fast. It is, like she said, the nature of the beast, the, it's the way that world lives.
Do you have a calendar that's online, that, so that somebody could look, you know, fourteen months ahead for weddings and?
We did, and we used to keep, a neighborhood had their own access to it.
Yeah.
Our calendar and whole website was compromised right in the middle of COVID. And now we are trying to allocate a special neighbor fund, which, neighbor calendar, which is completely separate from our website and give it its own entity. And believe me, I have stressed this in every meeting I can say it, so it is something we are working on, and I hope that it is finished by the end of the school year. But that would be ideal to me, because, like I said, I, I'm one person. I'll do the best that I can. The, all of the neighbors have my email or phone number. Some of them email me privately. Some of me call me. I give them the information that I have at the time. So that would be a really big help, and I hope that it gets taken care of by the end of the year. Any more questions about the calendar?
Do you think that the neighbors would appreciate knowing?
Sure.
Okay, then I, you'll do it?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, again, in, I guess, in Andrea's defense, she was following the T U P, which said quarterly. But if we want to go out, you know, a year or whatever, I guess we could, but you have to recognize those events may change, you know.
Commissioner Spears, do you think that I don't want to be transparent with everybody? Because I've, I've lived here all my life, so.
But I, you know, we've, we've sat here and we've heard a lot of frustration from your neighbors, especially about outreach between the school and the neighbors. And I would like to see whatever you could do to show that you are doing the maximum amount you can in terms of outreach, so that, that you could have a dialogue with your neighbors, so it doesn't take up all of the time that it has for this commission and the, and the city staff and, and everything else. Because I think at the end of the day, this is a, a, a problem of communication between people who are living next to each other.
Agreed.
And so, you know, I don't know why we're, the, the rest of the citizens in Sierra Madre are paying extra amount of money for staff to work on this problem when it could be resolved.
And it has to be on both sides of the party to be resolved, because I feel we're, at least in my position, I'm doing as much as I possibly can at the direction of my employers, but also, we do have held these neighborly meetings now, because it was at your, your direction to do it, and at most, we're having five to seven people. I mean, we're doing everything that you asked us to do, so I do want that to take into account too, that we are. And I'm not saying if it's the same seven that come, I'm glad to sit there with them. I'm, I'm listening. I'm taking notes. I come up with suggestions. I bring it to my employer, my director, my board of trustees. So yes, I do want to be transparent, and I want to give them as much information as I possibly have. Thank you.
Thank you. More questions?
I know you don't want duplicate speakers. I just have a point of clarification. What is the process for this? What happens now? I know you're just gathering public comment. So if you could explain to us what happens now, that would be fabulous.
This is just a discussion.
Yeah, what happens from the discussion. So I guess I'm asking the city attorney that question.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that, because actually, I wanted to jump in and quickly explain that, because I think there's some confusion about that.
Yeah, I thought there was too, so I'm, I'm hoping you can clarify.
So, so this, this proposed ordinance by staff is just a starting point for the conversation. This isn't the ordinance that's going to be adopted. The next step for this, and this body here, the planning commission, isn't the one that renders a recommendation about this ordinance. The body that will recommend, the body that provides a recommendation for this ordinance is the community services commission. The community services commission, while they've heard this, they haven't acted on it, because they want to receive input from the planning commission, apparently. So after this meeting, and after the planning commission provides their input, this will go back to the community services commission. The community services commission will consider it, make any amendments they want to it, and then recommend it to, or not recommend it, to the city council, and then the city council will ultimately make the final determination regarding what goes in or out of the ordinance.
Does the community services committee have a hearing in the same way that the planning commission does? And are we notified of that, or do we have to just check for their agenda?
If Ms. Ms. Heinz can speak to the noticing process for the ordinance.
Thank you.
Actually, without a connection, I could refer to my manager, whatever, because I don't quite know the process for the commission.
Yeah, please come up. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So as far as for our community services commission, in fact, I was just telling Lauren that my advisement is going to be that they actually watch this meeting to get fully caught up with the information that's being discussed, the extent of the conversation that's been occurring this evening. Basically, the way we inform them is either by email or direct phone call to advise them of what is going to be on the agenda. If we need to call a special meeting, then we do so, and we have enough time to do that. But we also, you know, contact them very consistently, have direct communication with the commissioners and the chair to inform them about the meetings that are taking place.
Wait, wait, please, 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 don't, wait, 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 let, let, let us handle this, please. Go ahead.
The meetings are then posted online for a general purpose for the public. We were asked the other evening why individuals were not contacted directly. We did make it clear that the meetings are always posted. We do post notices outside of City Hall. We post notices outside our public facilities, and we also send notices through our email and are posted, posted on the website.
So the public, the public noticing requirement occurs in the planning commission, because it's required to understand law. There is, there is no such requirement for the community services commission. However, given the sensitivity of this issue and the fact that so many residents care about it, I think it would make sense, and I'll be recommending to the city manager that we notice it for the community services commission the way we notice it for planning commission meetings.
Do we know, we, we don't know now when the date is set for the community service commission that's going to consider this next?
We do not. We do host our meetings every third Monday of the month, so it doesn't guarantee that it's going to be on the next meeting. I think it will depend on the outcome of today's meeting and gathering all the, and all the input that's been received. As public comment, as our city attorney stated earlier, that will then be taken back to commission collectively, have them go into further discussion. And then at that point, if it's recommended under advisement, that we revisit this draft before it actually goes to the city council.
So the, the third Monday of the month, you've already had your one for this month, right?
That is correct. The next meeting would be on May sixteenth. Our meetings are at five P M., unless otherwise stated. So again, if it is a special meeting that is being changed, for whatever reason, we make that notice as well to the general public, posted as needed, put it on the website as well, that it is a special meeting that indicates whether it's going to be in a different location and/or time as the regular monthly meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Public would like to say people would be here, because it doesn't sound like anybody here was there. Anybody who hasn't spoke on this who would like to speak?
I was just answering the calendar, and I was actually at that meeting.
Sure, you can have your, your three minutes.
So I submitted my comment to public records today. I'm not going to comment on that, because there's a lot that's been said and explained that I was asking for as well. But good evening. Just to give yourselves a little introduction to me, instead of just labeled as Alverno, I am Andrea Bertolini. I am a current resident of Sierra Madre, and my family has lived and been a part of this community since nineteen twenty-one. I am an employee of Alverno. There's ten of us. I'm also an alumni. I graduated in nineteen ninety-one. I've listened to this meeting and the other planning commission meetings, and I'm going to say this, even though some people might just say, oh, they're siding, she's siding with them because she works at Alverno. But I have to work with the city officials that are here for site rep as a, coming up, the police officers for weddings, or the film representation, the firemen that are there, the police department. I've known many, many families generationally through Sierra Madre, so I can count ten people at a ballfield at any time, walking through the city streets. I remember when it was empty, and there were no restaurants, and now I see that it's booming. So yes, I hope that filming can continue where everybody can have a say and have their piece of life and quality. But I do want to comment that the city officials that are here at Alverno, that greet me at the desk, Jen Peterson and everybody that works here, they are very polite. They do their job that I see on film sites. They are present. No one's asleep. They're all talking to the neighbors, and there's a concern, and there hasn't been an altercation in my five years of doing facilities that has stopped a film shoot, nor has brought a problem where any city official, or police, for that matter, has not gotten involved. So I wanted to speak on behalf of that as a resident, that what I see is that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. They are taking the right steps. It's all, the filming is going to be a work in progress, and I would hope to continue to see it bring revenue to the city, because it does help with a lot of things. We have a picture of Invasion of the Body Snatchers, where my mom and her four sisters are being taken pictures of it being filmed here. So it is a longstanding thing. But I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you listening to everyone's concerns.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken already, but I think everybody has? No? Oh, okay, you're.
Good evening. Kristen Stevens, Grandview. I really wish we had the documentation before spending the time I spent and my husband going through submitting public comments, because now it seems kind of worthless. There's some good stuff that Lauren has produced. I only wish that, over the years, I could have had, my, my, our comments or our concerns were better received and addressed. There have been altercations, such as the drone that followed me home one afternoon from a film shoot and into the back of my yard and was filming me. That should have shut that production down. It did not. I just got a, oh, well, we'll take care of it. It's documented. I've called the police. I complained about it. There are other issues. These are the kind of calendars we were getting. We were asking for more information. I have, didn't expect to show this, but these are film notices, some of them and calendars, that were never picked up. So, yeah, I guess maybe the signatures aren't a great thing, but I also know that two hundred and fifty feet goes to Allegria, and they have not been surveyed in years for their approval. So it is, it's been a faulty system. The calendars, besides this, we got locked out pretty early online. I don't want to have to run to a calendar. We did appreciate, and we stated this at the twenty nineteen meeting, we did appreciate the calendars. We wanted them filled out, filled out. Because in February, there was game after game, and I can find you the dates, that were not on that calendar, and the screaming and everything, we've already discussed, at a different meeting. And I asked, I said, why aren't these activities on the calendar? Because I think it gets sent to the city so that they look like they're not doing very much. They're not having many activities. I don't care about a wedding that's a year off. That's okay, but we want to know and be, not be lied to. I have a letter. I have letters. I have emails to Principal Fanara going, it's just incredibly noisy. Oh, that was a pep rally. This is done. The very next day, there was another basketball game. It just, it's unrelenting how many times there's lies by omission or gaslighting about what's going on at the school, but yet, I've been documenting it. I've been logging it, because I don't trust what they're going to say. I kind of wish we had that article that Mr. Farsing had. There are also thirty wedding or event rentals allowed on Alverno's campus. I'm not going to get too much into it, because I know this isn't what we're here for, but people are upset about the hundred and twenty days, because there's also all these pro bono gray area usage. Well, this is our alumni, so they get to use for their dance recital. It takes all day. You cannot record the transmissions of noise vibrations from trucks running. There can be a one-day film. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but we want all the information. It had a hundred and thirty people. It had two semis. It had twenty-six other trucks. It had a condor. It had two generators. It was unbelievable. That's one film. So we think there needs to be more addressed in what's going on specifically. I think we've included that. I think five days is way too short. It's a capricious use of the days, because we'll get notified, sorry, on a Thursday, let's say, might be end of day, that there's a film. The city is not in a session, or they will not contact us on a Friday regarding that. So we have to wait clear to Monday if we want to see what's going on. I think I included as part of my attachments, the difference between, I really need water.
Your, your three minutes are cut up, so can you kind of sum up a little bit? Thank you.
Mr. Farsing had an extra three minutes, so I'd like to.
That's my, that's my.
That wasn't including your questions to him.
Right, that's fine, but please don't tell me how to run my meeting.
Eleven P M. is too late. The five business days, I think we should have it extended, because in order to respond and get people, because the city's busy. We don't have enough staff. I think the staff works very hard. But to get things done, as we can see, we still, I still haven't had records produced, which I am told by the people I've called that they, or emailed, that they actually had them. Why we cannot receive them for months at a time, I don't know. In addition to all of this, we really appreciate when the notices are just PDF. Don't make extra work for people. I work in film. I've worked in the industry. I know what it's like. There's a lot of planning that goes into it. We don't just go, oh, let's make film. There's a lot of pre-prep that has to be done and budgeting, things like that. So please consider some of the things that I'm saying here and what I've put in our, our letter. I hope some of it is going to be taken in consideration. I think it's going to end up being a C U P meeting. We'd like to see some of the documentation that apparently Alverno's been provided. And then maybe we could have spoken a little more succinctly towards that, instead of just getting a card.
Can I ask you a question? You're the houses that had the damage from the explosion in twenty nineteen?
I'm one of the houses, yes.
Did you ever get compensated?
No, they, they wouldn't respond.
Because they have insurance policies, correct?
I, they're supposed to.
You don't know, okay.
No, I was told by the, the location manager, when I emailed him, he said, the woman at the school said to stop talking to you.
That was his, that's what he said?
Yeah, and I contacted Principal Fanara and said, what is going on? Why is this happening? There should not be this discord. But also, in my documentation, it shows that our house has been blackballed. A lot of these signature sheets weren't picked up, even though we signed them. You'll see in one of the pieces of paper, it clearly says, do not approach or such.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. All right, well, I think everybody's spoken. If not, this is your last chance. I'm going to close the public comment meeting then, part of the meeting then, and bring it back to our discussion.
So I guess my understanding is that this is feedback that will go back to the community services commission as they continue to form and shape this policy.
That's correct.
Yeah, I was just going to answer that. Yes, that is correct.
So, I guess, how do you want us to give our feedback?
Yeah, if you have, we'll just go down the line. If you have any thoughts on everything that's been said, or some...
I'm curious who originally drafted this policy?
City Attorney Garagosian.
Immediately out of the room.
So, he was at your meeting and, but your input from the meeting is what he drafted, made the draft from, correct?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, he, he drafted that in collaboration with the Community Services Staff. And then, that went to the Community Services Commission.
And that's, that's what's come out of this, is what we have now, okay?
Okay, then I've got a question for you, Lauren. What were your driving ambitions for this policy? What were the things that were most important to you?
The things that became most important to us were the concerns that we've heard voiced from many neighbors. So, that's what the driving force was. And in, one of the biggest things was the timeframe, having people come in and stay as late as five AM, or coming in at three AM, et cetera. I, I a hundred percent agree that that is, it's a lot, and we do need to stop that. So, that's what the driving force behind it was, was we are trying to make some changes to help mitigate some of the issues that do make people's lives a little bit less comfortable.
And the removal of the signatures was, what was the thinking behind that?
So, I don't wanna speak for attorney, for our city attorney, Garagosian, but what I will say to that fact is, from my understanding, that the signature process in the, in and of itself was a courtesy. It's not actually, from what I understand, it was just a courtesy, so it was the thought process that we would go ahead and just try to give a give and take. And if we make it uniform and certain things cannot occur, then we would take the signature process.
Um, it's okay, John. Yeah, I, I guess I'm, well, a lot of this is really far out from what we do. So, it's, it's hard for me to sort of gauge some of the, you know, balance, the economic impacts, cuz if, if, if we're talking about setback rules, I sort of understand what that means, right? But I, I, I'm out of my depth here, but I, I'm very concerned with the impact on the neighbors. And I think, you know, earlier tonight, we had CUPs for alcohol with a cutoff time for most of the week at ten PM in a commercial area. And here, in a residential area, we can go till eleven. That, that doesn't seem right to me. And, you know, then we heard testimony that if you have a seven to eleven, people show up early, start making a lot of noise, and there's not really any policing for that. And so, I, I guess, I'm concerned about the time limits on both sides, and I, I think just as with the issues we talked about with the TUP, we need to have a feedback loop that there can actually be some, something, when there's somebody who does something wrong, that it, they don't just leave, and then a new application comes in with some other name, or, or it's a different production. So, you're never gonna see those people again. I, I don't know, there needs to be some sort of method that you can say, look, you, you screwed up, your filming's done, or you're from the same production company, so you're out. Or, or something like that, so that the rules actually are, are complied with. I, I, and I, I, I think that the hundred-and-twenty days seems way too much, but I also understand that the idea of maybe having some short productions, you know, you could have two a month. I, I don't really understand what, what the right balance there is. And that's something I think the commission should, the Community Services Commission should, should think about more. But I also think with regard to Alverno specifically, which is a place where there's a lot more filming than, say, just some random house somewhere, we might wanna think about permanent monitoring situations. And this is something maybe we can talk about more in a CUP process, but you, you know, if you have a, a, a person who's monitoring an event and has an app that does sound measuring and whatnot, you know, that, that seems to function, but if you have one place where you always have a lot of events, it seems like we could install, you know, permanent sound monitoring, and they could just go straight to a website, and we could all see. It, it, it seems like that kinda stuff, especially given this, not just subjective differences, but people claiming different meter readings of sound, which seems pretty hard for me to imagine. I think that would be helpful. As far as, you know, I don't, I don't know really how you translate that into this ordinance, though. But again, I'm, I'm concerned with the time, especially in the residential area. As far as the signature things, I, I really don't feel like I have a good handle on what's the best way to do that. But to, to the extent we could add transparency, I, I'm all in favor of that.
Before Tom goes, there was a question while you were gone about the elimination of the signature and the, that it was in, or didn't really have an, you can get up and say what you wanted to ask him, go ahead.
The question was in regards to the signature process and the thoughts behind the removal of the signature process. And I didn't wanna misspeak, but from my understanding, I was trying to relay to them my understanding of the signatures having been a courtesy.
So, the issue was what harm are we trying to address? And for, for the businesses, the harm that would occur by, because of filming, would be economic primarily. You'd have to shut down the street, you'd have to, I don't know, they'd have to, there's gonna be more cars, more traffic, something that's gonna prevent them from making a profit or, or generating revenue. So, for that reason, we felt signatures in that situation makes sense, because through the signatures, they can request compensation for the harm that they're gonna incur financially. For the residents, we thought it was a little bit different. For the residents, we thought the harm is to their comfort. They want, they want to live in their home in comfort. And because of that, we, we actually limited the hours, because they were six to twelve, I think. We brought it down from seven to eleven. We could limit that further. We wanted to limit the number of events per year, so putting a hard cap on that. Now, if a hundred-and-twenty is too much, or one per month is too much, we can reduce that as well. We wanted to limit productions on Sundays, so there'd be nothing happening on Sunday anymore, because as some residents noted, everyone's entitled to some rest. So, that was the thinking behind having a signature requirement for the commercial zone and having more stringent limitations on filming in general in the residential zone.
I mean, cuz the whole idea was that, obviously, you've heard from the residents that they feel that they've, it's sort of, that the process has almost been defrauded, you know, and so it hasn't really been helpful. Is that, was that part of the consideration as well?
Right, there, there, well, there were three other considerations I'd stated earlier. One is the fact that, that fraud issue, it wasn't working, obviously, and we're concerned that it might not work in the future. So, we don't know how, how, how much value signatures have. Number two concern is the fact that it was becoming extractive in the residential area. So, some residents are opposed to it, they're not gonna sign it, but other residents see an advantage to it and would require payment. Ms. Heinz, can you let us know, like, to your knowledge, what's the most residents have required of a, of a production company in order to gather signatures?
The highest amount that I have been told was five thousand dollars.
Individually, how about, how about cumulatively?
So, for one film shoot in particular, in the commercial zone, there were a little over a hundred-and-some-odd thousand dollars in payouts.
So, residents in that area are receiving, it's being divided among them, but something like a hundred-something thousand dollars in, in payout.
And is that, is that, what about commercial, the commercial zones, is that very different, or?
That was the commercial zone.
Okay.
That was in the commercial zone. That was not in a, in a residential area. Now, this was information that was relayed to me from the production company. I do not entertain, I do not get myself involved in monetary conversations between the actual private party and the production company. So, but this is the information that I have been told, that they've been asked for, and I have seen some documentation from merchants, but unfortunately, that is just, seems to be, it's not just here, I wanna make that clear as well. That is not just an issue that takes place in Sierra Madre. It is an issue that occurs all over Los Angeles County, everywhere, anywhere that filming will take place. Some people in the production world would consider others to be a little opportunistic in that fashion, and know that signatures that are required have more value, and will try to hold them over a barrel until a certain amount is received.
If, if, if the concept is that, that there's gonna be financial harm to a business, it, it's not, it's not blackmail or holding people over a barrel, it's saying, look, you, you're gonna close down a street, and my customers aren't gonna come. I, I don't see that as unfair, yeah.
Right, and, and you, so that's, and that's why we proposed keeping it in the commercial area and, and not in the residential area, cuz we were just trying to think, what is the harm we're trying to address? And if the harm is financial, then let's create, let's solve it financially. If the harm is to individuals' comfort, then let's address that, because I assume you could address the, the harm through finances as well, but that means some residents that are opposed to it would continually be left out of that financial gain, and they would continue to suffer the, the consequences of the filming. And if you were to amend the consequence, if you were to amend the, if you put more stringent limitations on the filming, then even those residents who are opposed to the filming would still benefit from it.
Yeah, but, I mean, one other issue is, if you're talking about loss of revenue from loss of employ, or customers, you know, I, I think that's somewhat foreseeable, you can see that, and maybe you could quantify noise or loss of quality of life, but if there's an explosion that damages somebody's house, it, it floors me that people haven't been compensated for that. I mean, that's, that's just not right. That, that, that should have been done, and if it was two thousand and nineteen, the statute of limitations might've passed, so that just sounds like a, a wrong. I don't know if there's anything we can do to, to right that wrong, but that, I, I'm, I'm shocked to hear that. I guess it's the only thing I can take away from that.
So, the answer to the residential, or was that you don't have a cumulative amount, but, but you do know of one resident that tried to extract five thousand dollars from the production company?
Yes, that has happened, yes.
Okay, but you don't have a cumulative amount for the residential area that you know, you just know that the commercial area was about a hundred grand?
Correct. I don't know how much has gone out. I do know that in certain neighborhoods, that residents will get paid a hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, I've heard five hundred dollars if they're using a driveway, for example, like in the canyon. Real estate is sought after, so they will use people's driveways, and they will obviously pay, compensate them for it. So, that kind of work will command a higher rate, because they are entering into a different type of contract. But just for signature gathering, I have heard and seen that, you know, people have actually called me and said that they would do it for three, four hundred dollars. So, it does happen.
Okay.
Ms. Heinz, how many permits have been held up because of a lack of signatures?
I'd actually have to go ahead and research that and come back to you. It hasn't been that many. So, in the ten-plus years, I would say maybe five. So, it's not, it doesn't happen all that often.
And, Mr. City Attorney, what is the case where signatures are required today?
When are signatures required today for filming? Ms. Heinz can answer that one.
So, currently, the signatures are required, if you wanna come in and film between the hours of seven AM to eleven PM, we require fifty-one percent approval. Anything between the hours of eleven PM to seven AM requires seventy-five percent approval. And that'll, so that's what the current signature requirements are.
So, today, one out of two neighbors have to sign off on any filming that's happening at Alverno today?
Between the hours of seven AM and eleven PM, it would be fifty-one percent. But if they wanted to come in at six AM, then it would take it to the seventy-five.
So, at a minimum, one out of two neighbors have said, fine, go ahead and film here?
Yes.
But the issue with the fraud, we don't know how widespread that is, we don't know how many vendors are actually turning in signatures that are valid. It's, we feel like the system isn't working.
Well, the, I guess the other question is, if we're doing property owners or tenants, like, how do you know you're getting fifty-one percent? Does, does one tenant speak for the whole property?
I believe it's by unit.
Correct.
Right, but I mean, if, if, it's just, it seems like if, I, I understand if you just did property owners, right, cuz there's one person that owns one property, but the tenant...
We, we, we thought tenant made sense, because if it's going to be an apartment building and the landlord doesn't live there, but the tenants are affected by the filming, the tenant should have a say. And we, they have to get signatures from individual units, for example.
So, if, if there's, say, ten properties, and one apartment building has many, many units, you could just canvas that apartment building and get your fifty-one percent?
Possible.
So, I'm thinking about the formula with the hundred-and-twenty days and, and the issue is comfort that we're trying to solve, and I was noticing that the, the variation in days and productions and that Alverno provided, and one of the years, they only had two productions, but they had many more days than all, any of the other years of, you know, filming and setting up and striking. What if you limit the number of days a year for any site that had more variability in some of the other aspects of it?
It, it's a policy decision for the Community Services Commission to make and the City Council to make. Staff, staff's indifferent on that point.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom. So, I guess, in providing feedback to Community Services Commission, regardless of how widespread we think there could be the possibility of false signatures, I'm having a hard time reconciling that one of every two neighbors is signing off on these productions at Alverno. That's just something to ponder. I don't have anything on that. But I'm, I think that, I personally think the removal of the signatures isn't the right solution. It seems like at least a decent way to try to get notifications and permissions from, from the residents who are gonna be most affected by it. I think that the busiest day that Al, or the busiest year that Alverno's had in recent history was sixty-six days of filming, and we're giving people, as we would say here on the commission by right, the ability to double that. That doesn't seem, I, I, I can't reconcile that at all. I think that if, if you, if there is a push towards removing the signatures, that there needs to be a much better way to have residents appeal. I, I mean, to Commissioner Hutt's point, there's no way for them to appeal today, and so that would have to be added as part of this process, and it would have to be a much bigger holistic process, in my opinion. I think that selfishly, as part of this body, we really need guidance from City Council on where they want filming to fall before we address the CUP for Alverno. I just think that anything else is, is us making up policy without the guidance that's needed. So, I, I understand that there was concern from a timing perspective of when all of this would hit, but I just can't imagine us making recommendations on the CUP for the specific plan until the filming side has been resolved.
For the master plan?
For the master plan, for the master plan, sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I just, I just don't understand how we could...
I, I think that's a really good point. I, I totally concur.
Your turn, Bob.
So, I, I think we need more commitment about notification, both by Alverno and by the city, because there's a lot of things going on at Alverno that are not filming, that the community doesn't have any say in, so that they look to the filming processes that's the one area where they can at least speak up. that's the one area where they can at least speak up. The concept of a sign, I think, is, has merit. We use it for other things. I, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I can't expect all the citizens to understand the difference, you know, between, you know, TUP and whatever of, other kinds of permissives, permitting that the city's going to do, and so, the more we can make things the same or similar, so that they can say, well, I got a permit, and that means that there'll be a monitor there. So, the role of the monitor, I think, needs to be fleshed out, so that everyone is on the same sheet of music as to what that monitor's gonna do. The notification process is kind of interesting. Is it, is it for notification, is it for, or for permission? Because it seems to be going, we seem to hear two different things, that, well, here, I'm giving you notice that we're filming, good luck with it, or I need your permission to film.
They go hand in hand. So, if there, if it's a production of 50 or more, that's where we require the signatures, and they would have to give the notice, so that the, the neighbor merchant would be informed of the proposed activity, and therefore being able to sign off on the proposed activity. So, that is, it is supposed to be hand in hand.
But if, if we get out of the downtown area, because the, the, as the city attorney said, that the harms are pretty cut and dried there, it's, you know, you're costing me money because my people, people can't get to my shop. That, I think, we can all agree on. But if you're, now you're out into the R1 or R3 or whatever area, and the, the citizens that are getting a piece of paper, you know, are they being notified, or are they being asked for permission?
So, again, it depends on the number of people. If it's 50 or more, it is a hand in hand thing, correct, for film shoots only, that's the only thing I can speak to. But the, signatures are required for permission, and that was with the notification. So, it's basically, they're attached. And you get the notification, and then you say, yes, you have my permission to film, or no.
Okay, so, and I, and I think this, I, I think the citizens would be well-served to make sure that that's really spelled out, and if they disagree, what's the appeal process? So, and the appeal process, it sounds like because of the scheduling issues between the permitting process and the times that the City Council meets, that, you know, it could be too late by the time, you know, it gets on anybody's agenda. And, you know, I, I'm not sure that the City Council will enjoy spending their valuable time trying to decide whether there's a commercial shot at wherever. So, I'm, you know, I think that, I think there maybe needs to be a, a medium step in between of some, of some flavor. I'm absolutely in favor of less days, because the, you know, the concept of, I mean, they've, Alverno has provided us with some pretty good statistics, I guess, we'll take it for its face value, but if the maximum has been 66, then why are we doubling it for them?
It wasn't, uh, the thought process wasn't in terms of doubling the amount of days. It was just trying to be considerate in terms of one production a month, but also trying to keep in mind that the prep days, for example, so, if there could be three, four prep days, one day of filming.
So, so the 120 days, though, is inclusive of a prep and take-in?
Of everything, correct.
So, um, you know, I, I, that, when you talk about inconvenience, you know, I think 120 days will get kind of long and annoying after a while. So, I, you know, I don't know that it needs to be that long. And, and, you know, I know that the, the, in, in the Alverno letter, it, it talked about, well, the city's making, you know, 600,000, 900,000 dollars on all these film permits, and, you know, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll let the, the City Council decide whether that money's really worth it for all the time and energy and annoyance that it's taken up in the citizens, because, you know, it might just be that, no, the answer's no, it's not. Or, we're gonna make it so that, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make money on this, we're gonna really pay for all this, you know, time and energy we're putting in on it.
I'll, I'll, I'll just note, I actually don't think we can prohibit filming throughout the city. I think, I think state law doesn't allow us to do that because of the, the filming lobby in the state. But, we can impose whatever restrictions.
But, but aren't the fees cost recovery? I mean, they're not taxes, right?
The, the fees are intended to be cost recovery, correct. This isn't a big source of revenue for the city.
So, we can't, the city can't make money on this. The, the, the fees that we charge are for the cost the city incurs, and they're supposed to be one, one-to-one. So, that if we didn't have any filming, I mean, maybe we wouldn't have as many employees, sorry. But, I mean, but the city wouldn't have those costs. So, this isn't a moneymaker for the city, it's just cost recovery.
So, the, so this idea that the city is making 900,000 dollars is not even germane.
This, this, this isn't a source of profit for the city, but it does generate revenue for the city. It does keep people like Ms. Hines employed, for example. It does, like, like Alverno said, it does bring businesses to shop or spend money in the city. So, it's, it's not, well, Commissioner Hut's right, it's not a source of profit for the city, it's not something that goes in our general account, we save, it generates revenue in the city.
Yeah, but the, the, the money that the, the film crews spend in the city is a different issue. I mean, that's like the overall economy of the, of the community, as opposed to the, the city budget, right?
Yeah, so, and the, but I think in, in, in both ordinances, the, the role of the monitor gets, should be really fleshed out, you know, somebody with a vest on that says monitor, somebody who has a sound meter, who has a camera to take pictures, who has a clipboard to find out, you know, who's calling him, you know, names, and, you know, all that kind of malarkey, because at some point in time, all that folds back into the next time. And, and I think what we're hearing is that there's been past behaviors, and, and people, A, don't know, don't get any results when they call whoever there's, they, they think they can call to, to get resolution, and then there doesn't seem to be any, if they complain, or if they have a problem with it, that it doesn't seem to, you know, inspire any changes. And so, you know, I, I think in both, you know, how that monitor works and what they do, you know, needs to be clear, so that everybody in the program says, oh, that's the monitor, they're here to do, you know, to check the sound, to make sure everyone, there's no cars parked, you know, all these things, and they work with police and fire, and they do have the ability to say, no. And, and maybe that might inspire some cooperation on the right people.
Sorry, one, one thing I forgot to mention is, I think that the, adding the ability to preclude film permits based on previous experiences should be added.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would like to add, maybe, apart from the conundrum of the monitor, is the damages that was occurred at a couple of houses, and then even the poor lady in Pasadena who's had trucks perpetually parked in front of her house and difficult to get out of the driveway, that there needs to be, because these people post insurance policies, and I don't know to what extent we can require, require them to streamline the process for claims. I mean, not that, you know, that all of a sudden 300 people are throwing in a claim for, you know, something happening because of whatever, but, you know, and, and on the other side of the spectrum, not a long-drawn-out process where you have to sue them, and it has to, almost like a small claims process, but rather than being told, oh, we were told not to talk to you, then, then maybe you just have, there's gotta be some kind of connection to their claims adjuster directly, so that you're not left to, you know, he said, she said, or trying to contact somebody in the film industry who then tells you that they're not supposed to talk to you, who, who might have made a deal with you, you know, that kind of, I don't think a capricious deal-making process is, is gonna work for the city. The only other thing was, if they want to hire another signature person, that's the only remedy to this fraud situation, because otherwise, I think I'm not in favor of the signatures, only from the standpoint that if you had the same face or same, somebody from the city who everybody knew, then I think there'd be more credibility from the neighbors and the residents, that they'd see the same face, they'd know somebody from the city. But, I don't know if that's possible. That means you have somebody who's, almost has a permanent job traipsing around, going to every neighborhood and knocking on the door. If that gets us another job in town, great. But, I don't know if that's practical, I just...
There would be an issue with that, and the only issue is that whomever it would be that would gather it, if they're a city employee, would not be able to engage in conversations of monetary value. So, if a resident has concerns and doesn't want to sign because they want a paycheck out of it, the city employee does not have the authority to enter into negotiations with that person.
Right.
So, it kind of becomes a wash, because then the employee would then have to contact production, production would then have to contact the resident, and we're right back in the...
I, I, you know, I guess that it'd be a process of, you get as many signatures as you can, if you get the percentages, and then the city goes home.
Right.
And, and if you don't, then you have to go to the secondary process of, well, these people want money, someone needs to talk to them, make a deal before they'll sign. Then you've got a limited list of people that might, you know, throw, throw them over the percentage to satisfy the, the, whatever the concern is. But I didn't hear that from the public, that people are really interested in the thumbs up, thumbs, I mean, they're more of a thumbs up, thumbs down process. So, I just, I just kind of don't see that the signatures do us any good, because I think it's gonna be wrought with fraud, because like you said, you get somebody that hires a secondary and a third dairy, you know, it's like calling eight, you know, customer service, and you get somebody, you know, foreign country.
And, and the way the city's trying to remedy that is, is posting online, so individual residents can go and check. But, again, that requires vigilance on the part of individual, on, on the part of residents, and do we want to impose that burden on residents? It's, it's a policy decision for, for the bodies to decide.
Hey, one thing I'm puzzled by, we heard earlier that the people who, who gather these signatures are like some companies that the production groups farm it out to, but somehow they have the ability to negotiate money? So, I mean, there must be a budget, right?
Again, that's between the production companies and the parties involved.
Right.
I don't, I don't have information, I can't speak to that.
But, there's obviously a budget, because otherwise, these people that are hired wouldn't know when they can say yes or not, right? And, and so, I, I don't know, I, I'm so in the dark of how this works, I went halfway through the meeting, like, not understanding the, the real purpose of the signatures, which is like...
That's fine.
Effectively to compensate people for, for the, the pain and suffering, or the lost customers, or whatnot. So, you know, all this stuff, when we talked about, well, the different notices and things, that, that doesn't accomplish that function. And I don't know if, if there's a standard industry budget, I mean, maybe there's just like a fund that you just pay everyone 10 bucks per day, or something like that, so it's sort of standardized. It, it seems, it seems like a really inefficient system to have these signature people go out and haggle, or fraud, or some such. I, I don't know, it, it, bewildering to me.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to go back to the point that Attorney Garagosian pointed out, that the point to removing the signatures was to address the real harm, which is comfort. And I think the comfort of everybody in town is important, not just those who want to gain financially or not. And, so, if you are interested in doing that, you want to limit the total number of days a year, and if you look at, I want to go back to the, the really interesting table of numbers that Alverno contributed, that they only had two productions in 2019, but they had 66 days. And, and so, limiting the number of productions isn't necessarily the goal. The only goal, it seems to be, is how many days a year any reasonable neighborhood would think was acceptable to have filming. And I'm just throwing out a number, I'm thinking maybe 30. After about 30 days, whether they're consecutive or spread out through the year, I'd start to go nuts. But, you know, I'm just trying to...
Well, and...
...understand the comfort issue here. Yeah, and the comfort issue is kind of cloudy, because it's not just the film days are, that are disruptive on the neighbors. And if the girls' softball team makes the playoffs, and they're going to CIF, then there's gonna be a lot more games. And, and, so... But we're just... The only thing that we can control, though, is, is the film permit. So, yeah. No, we can control the film permit here, but with the CUP, we can control other stuff. Right. But for the filming, the comfort, I think, is the best gauge is the number of days a year, unless somebody else... I mean, are we gonna piss off a bunch of people by removing the signatures that aren't gonna get the payout anymore? I mean, we're hearing from all the people that are annoyed about the noise, but maybe there's a whole nother crowd out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're really outside of our... Yes. Yep, study area.
But I, I mean, I don't, I never heard from people here that it's, it's a matter of, just, they're feeling there's, there's not a lot of honesty in the whole process, and the people that are having the most problems are the ones that feel like they're being purposely bypassed, and, 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 so we need to find some way to make sure that that doesn't happen. Either give them adjudication process, or, or some other best, I mean, I, I was thinking of an app where they'd have to be notified, then they could actually respond to the app and have to, and then it would be registered. But that would be, even though it'd be voluntary, it'd be something that could be sent out to within a radius, that's something that, you know, electronic, you know...
I, I think having citizens be able to say, please put my name on a email notification list for any, all film permits, and, you know, they can delete the ones that don't apply to them, but I think we've heard enough people are interested and concerned about it, that they should receive notification.
Yeah. Because that would be easier to, if they signed up for the app, then they would automatically get notified, and they could automatically respond. And then they could also respond, I suppose, independently to whoever has the app, if it's not the city. I mean, it goes to their third party, then they get to say if they want, they want compensation for some side, you know, like, I have these trucks parked in my house, in front of my house routinely, I, I think I'd like something for, you know, in Ms. Chow's case, I wouldn't blame her, you know, whereas if you're down the street and there's not a lot of disruption in front of your house, or you're agreeable, and you just sign off on it, then, then they have a limited list of who's left and who to deal with. I, I don't know how, if, you know, I'm not an electronics expert, but I think that could be possibly worked on in some way, so that there could be immediate gratification and immediate, immediate feedback from the residents, so they could, and have somebody that's accountable to them, rather than this, you know, sort of loose-ended, you know, and, you know, processes that's, you know, linked with fraud, and, and sort of this, all this, the finger, finger pointing and the name-calling that we're hearing, hearing from people. I'd like to see that eliminated, you know. In fact, I don't even want Alverno to be stuck in the middle of the whole thing, if they're, if that's the prob, if that's part of the problem. They have, they have a separate issue, but in terms of the filming, there should be some direct adjudication process for these people, I think. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly, but I, I kind of agree, I don't think the signatures help, doesn't seem like it's had, it's just made more, it's, because it's required, it's just created more animosity. And, and then we're hearing from the people who have the, who, who are affected the most.
If I can interject, it is 11:08 PM, we still have one other discussion item to go through that we have to get through this evening.
Sure. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can move on. Yeah, I'm, I'm done. All right, sorry. Thank you, Director Gonzalez, I apologize.
No, not a problem. We, Attorney Garagosian will be giving the staff report.
Little ass item.
I'll be very quick.
Um, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I inquired about buying this building, and so, but was outbid. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from, from this.
All right.
I'm gonna take off.
Good night.
You just wanted to wave.
Well, that's...
I also...
Good night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has staff received the presentation? If not, then, I can just present orally.
Just, just present orally.
Okay. So, as you may have heard, the, the, the City Council has approved a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 350 West Sierra Madre Boulevard, and the lot behind it, which is at 23 South Lima Street. Excellent. Next slide, please. Here you go. Thank you. The government code requires that prior to any purchase of a property or sale of a property, that the planning commission make a consistency finding with the general plan, as to location, purpose, and extent of acquisition. In this picture, we have the location of the site, it's actually not too far from City Hall. On the left-hand side, it's, the property's located where that star is, and on the right-hand side, there are, for those who can see it, there are, there are red box, it's a red box encompassing the two lots on the corner of Lima and Sierra Madre. So, I stated it's centrally located within Measure V area, the lots are zoned commercial, and it's within .2 miles of City Hall. Here's a picture of the front facade and the back, and the purpose of this acquisition is to convert... And the purpose of this acquisition is to convert it into a new police department headquarters. It will require significant retrofitting. The existing building was built in nineteen seventy to accommodate half the staff that the police department currently has. Currently, the police department has twenty full-time employees and several part-time employees and volunteers. The issue was compounded when the city converted to a career fire department. In 2012, the fire department employed three full-time captains and one part-time captain. Today, the fire department employs over ten full-time staff. So the city will be purchasing both lots for three point four million. I don't have the division there, but those are two separate lots. And the city will be securing the perimeter of the parking lot currently because the police, the headquarters is at City Hall, or right adjacent to City Hall. They use the city parking lot, and we don't have a secure fence perimeter around that parking lot. And that could be helpful if, you know, the vehicles parked there often have guns inside of them. Sometimes they may involve dropping off people who've committed violent crimes. So it'd be safer for everyone to have a perimeter around the parking, parking lot. The purchase is consistent with the general plan. Objective L forty-two says, is providing for the development of public institutional uses such as civic buildings, educational facilities, libraries. In locations where these uses already exist, and ensure that they are compatible and complement the adjacent land uses. So the existing use is, or was a bank. It's currently vacant. And it's compatible and complements the adjacent land uses. The building would be located between Sierra Madre Library and the Civic Center. Policy L forty-two point one states that it allows, it must allow for development of a governmental agency or services buildings, which is, which are easily accessible to residents and others. Here you have a police administrative building, which is easily accessible to residents as it's located on Sierra Madre, along Sierra Madre Boulevard and within walking distance of City Hall. And lastly, it satisfies objective C one because the general plan requires that we have sufficient resources and training to achieve an exceptional level of public safety. As currently stated, the, this current space is, is just too small. And are, as a result, the members of the fire department and police department often are involved in fistfights and other altercations. I'm just joking. And, and, but it, but it is, it is too small. And the police department benefits from a larger headquarters, and the fire department will benefit from a larger space because they will take over the space currently occupied by the police department. And I believe we might move community services as well, which operates out of the Hart House, the Hart House?
Yes, the Hart House.
Hart Park House to either City Hall here or move them across to where the, where the police department is located. And that concludes my report. Do the commissioners have any questions?
No.
It's still a work in progress. So, I mean, moving all the communications gear from here to there would be a tad expensive if they want to move dispatch and stuff like that. So, but that's their, that's their personal budget, so we don't care.
Was this used at one time by the police?
No.
No? So it was always at, but-
It used to be at fifty-five West.
What was it?
It was a Bank of America.
It was always a bank?
It was a bank as, as far as I, I know.
Okay, all right. So there's no efficiencies by, other than it's a big open space? Oh, okay.
I did have a question. Why was this a discussion item and not some, do you need an official ruling from us?
Yes, I believe there's a resolution in the, in the agenda packet. And so the planning commission will need to adopt resolution number twenty-two.
Twenty-two dash- And we could have done this via consent as well, with a resolution.
Okay, oh, I see. Okay.
That's what I was asking, because it seemed like they, it was listed in the discussion, so I was a little-
If you don't have any more questions, I'll, I'll let the public speak. Anyone want to speak on this issue? Okay. Okay? Yes, no? Okay, okay. All right, we'll close the public comment then. Yeah, I guess if we need the space, we need the space. I don't want the cops fighting with the firemen over their Dalmatian or whatever it is. Sounds like, I mean, I'm just surprised we have the, the revenue. Every time we turn around, we don't have money for things, so. But I guess it's a long-term acquisition, so, okay. I assume there's, the budget's been accounted for.
We, we had sufficient funds in the reserve.
Oh, terrific. Do I have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash fourteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right.
We get very efficient after eleven, don't we?
Yeah, well-
Is there one more now?
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, we just, planning commission reports, anybody have anything?
No, we have, we still have-
Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more property.
Twenty-two dash twelve.
No, 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 no.
No, no, we did not.
That was it. Yeah, hey, hey. Trying to take over the meeting, Bob?
Just wanted to make sure.
Everybody else is, come on. Okay, planning commission reports, anybody having issues, anything they want to-
Nothing to report.
No.
Staff, we do have, at our next hearing, which is May fifth, we are continuing the public hearing of the Meadows at Bailey Canyon project for commission deliberation.
It's those five items that we have to approve in a certain order?
Yes.
And will we be getting some background on what the order is and why?
So you could take them out of order, but approving the, it really, the first item that you really have to make a determination on is the environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. If you can't get past that, then
Okay.
you won't be able to reach a determination on the others.
Right. Okay.
But to do that, we have to be in agreement with the specific plan, it sounds like, to kind of go together.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, depending what the agenda is, we'll probably take those two items first, knock them off, okay? Very good. That's it.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a ribbon-cutting ceremony for, yes.
So, yes, tomorrow at nine AM at the city yard, behind the city yard, there's going to be an official ribbon-cutting for the opening of the solar project. I don't think it's gonna be actually officially online in terms of electrification, but in terms of construction, we're having our ribbon-cutting and have quite the roster of local elected officials. Councilwoman, sorry, Congresswoman Chu, I know Portantino, so a number of the state and federal officials will be there to, you know, welcome our new solar project. So please come if you are interested. And again, it's at nine AM, up, I think, behind, you know, sort of between the float barn and Dapper in that, you know, that area where they've, they've built the solar, the solar project. So, yeah, thanks.
Kelly, is that gonna include back here, the parking lot here?
No, no, this is just the project out, out by the, the field, out by the-
We approved them out here as well.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we did.
Well, there's, yeah, they'll be, so there's, there's a, we've, we've approved a solar project for the roof at City Hall, but that hasn't even broke ground. It's still in its planning stages. So, yeah, this is the one behind, behind Heasley.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Very good. Then we are adjourned to May-
May fifth.
Cinco de Mayo.
St. Patrick's Day, Cinco de Mayo.